I would like to call this meeting to order if we could please stand and say the Pledge of Allegiance. Pledge of Allegiance.
To the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay. Can we have a roll call, Sam?
Yes. Commissioner Dawson. Commissioner Drost. Commissioner Ennis.
Present.
Commissioner Green.
Here.
Commissioner Jensen.
Here.
Commissioner Lorenzini.
Here.
Commissioner Sagalos.
Here.
Commissioner Worsko. Chair Sherwin.
Here. All right, thank you. We have a quorum. Looking at the agenda, is there a motion to approve the minutes that are listed on the agenda sheet?
I'll make that motion. Second.
Okay, we have a motion to approve the minutes. We have the... Oh, we won't do a roll call, we'll just do a voice vote. Voice vote, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? All right, motion passes. Minutes are approved. Okay, first item on the agenda, and only item on the agenda, is a public hearing for Full Circle Communities Grace Terrace at 1519 1625 South Arlington Heights Road. Just real quick, there's a lot of folks here, so some of you, first of all, welcome, and we have three rooms laid out. We have this primary room, we have a room next to us, and then there's a room downstairs that is potentially have some folks down there, so we need to be cognizant of that. What we're going to do here is have a public hearing, and the way this is going to go is we will have the petitioner present, and then the staff will provide its support. For the record, Commissioner Dawson has just joined us. And what we'll do is, when we have meetings like this that are large, we're going to have to set some ground rules, so just make sure we will have opportunities to speak. It'll be limited. When the public hearing starts, and we'll have people come up, it'll be limited to like, we'll do essentially three minutes per person as a maximum. Doesn't mean you have to use that. If you're repeating other people, it's helpful to keep things going to, you can come up, state your name, and concur with somebody else, but we don't have to, you know, we're not going to get through this if we're all repeating the same materials. So, it's going to be some ground rules we have to keep. We also have to be patient. Like I said, there's some folks in the other room that may want to come up and speak as well. I'll give you a few more pointers when we get started with that, but regardless of who's presenting, whether it's the petitioner, the staff, the public, there's no cheer, this isn't like a sports match or anything, there's no cheering, there's no clapping, there's no hollering, that's just not how these things are going to run. So, please be respectful. If you're going to speak, please stick to the topic at hand. And I think that's a good start. Sam, is there anything to add?
One thing to add, when we do get to public comments, you'll notice there's a clock up here at the top of the room. That will have a three-minute timeline on it, so you can keep track of how long you're speaking relative to those three minutes.
And the other thing I'd add is, when you come up as a public comment, you can address essentially to the, technically it's to the chair, me, but it's not really a dialogue with the board, it's more of sort of presenting your public comment. And so, we may have a couple of questions, but we may, you know, technically it's just for you to provide your public comment. So, it's not really a dialogue with the board at that point. We're not there yet. What we are going to do is start with the staff. Have the public notices been given for this, Sam?
They have.
Great, thank you. So, I think what we'll start here is we'll bring the petitioner up. Anybody who plans to speak on behalf of the petitioner, if you could stand before the podium? And anybody else?
With the petitioner.
With the petitioner. All right, if you could please raise your right hand, you swear to tell the truth on all matters discussed during the public hearing this evening?
I do.
Thank you. There is a staff report that has been provided. Do you agree with all the conditions of approval that staff is included in that report?
There's one item of clarification. Staff is recommending less parking than we have proposed. We would be willing to accept that lesser recommendation, but are willing to provide the full amount of parking that we have submitted.
Noted, thank you. Okay, so with that, we'll get started with the petitioner's report. Petitioner's presentation, thank you.
You may need to turn on the pointer, there's a little on switch on the side.
And as you're presenting, if you could please spell your name for the transcript, we make sure we have that in the record.
I don't think this has the... Denise Reyes, D-E-N-I-S-E-R-E-Y-E-S. Good evening, everyone. My name is Denise Reyes, and I'm here today to reintroduce Grace Terrace Development Project. Since we met last November, we've had several meetings and conversations where we received feedback from village trustees, commissioners, and residents regarding our project. And we've taken that feedback into heart and into account, and are here today to present design changes in response to that feedback. A quick reintroduction of Full Circle Communities. Full Circle is an affordable housing, a nonprofit affordable housing developer since 1999. We own and operate over 1,600 units in Iowa, Illinois, and Michigan, with additional units approved or under construction. Our model to create affordable housing includes dedicating 75% of our economics to providing supportive services for all of our residents. Full Circle is not just a developer, but we are also long-term owners and managers of this property. And as such, we're committed to the success of this development and in being good neighbors in Arlington Heights. So, we are here today after being approached by the Housing Task Force, which is an organization committed to bringing housing opportunities to persons with disabilities in the northwest suburbs. The Task Force successfully helped create Hearts Place, which was Arlington Heights' first permanent supportive housing that opened in 2019. Hearts Place is very successful. It is fully leased and has an extensive waitlist of over 100 candidates, potential tenants. And this is also true for neighboring areas with permanent supportive housing, or housing that similarly provides services for persons with disabilities, such as Myers Place in Mount Prospect that opened in 2013, Phil Haven in Wheeling that opened in 2017, and Midtown Crossing that opened in Displanes in 2017. The success of these buildings demonstrates a continued need for this type of housing, which also has been confirmed by a third-party market study. The Task Force approached us to build a new construction permanent supportive housing building here in Arlington Heights. And through working with the Housing Task Force, we believe that we can help respond to the ongoing need for this type of housing in the northwest suburbs. In addition to creating long-term stability for persons with disabilities and veterans, this project aligns with the village's consolidated plan, specifically for priority number one, which is providing housing stability for veterans and persons with disabilities as an identified vulnerable population. It also aligns with the village's 2024-2025 strategic priorities, specifically priority number six, to continue to embrace diversity, equity, and inclusion efforts to create a sense of belonging in the community and in village governments. And priority number nine, to seek, maintain, and expand attainable housing within the community. This project also aligns with the village's sustainable goals. All of the appliances will be Energy Star certified appliances, and we will achieve Enterprise Green Community certification for the building. A quick overview of Grace Terrace. It is a total of 25 units, 20 of which will be one bedrooms, five will be two bedrooms. The target population are for persons with disabilities and veterans, and this is 100% permanent supportive housing, which is not transitional, and means that all tenants will have leases. Supportive means that there are services available to all residents, but residents are not required to use those services as part of their tenancy. This is independent living, and all residents must have a disability to live at Grace Terrace. So, because we're geared toward persons with disabilities, all of the units will have a universal design feature, which includes wider hallways and doors, wider maneuvering spaces and bathrooms, and lower counter heights, as well as roll under sinks and some roll-in showers. Grace Terrace will have 100% rental assistance, project-based vouchers that will be covered through the Housing Authority of Cook County, and will be for households earning 30% and 50% area median income. This slide demonstrates the location of our site. Grace Terrace will be located at 1519 South Arlington Heights Road, which is just north of Gulf Road. The site is a high-priority area and is within a half-mile of plenty of amenities such as restaurants, stores, pharmacies, and public transportation. This slide shows the original proposal we presented to you back in November, where the building and the parking lot faced east. And we've heard your feedback from this commission, as well as from residents regarding the orientation of the building, as well as the proximity of the building to the neighbors and the height of the building. And so, we went back to our design team to work on ways that we can accommodate changes to address that feedback. So, on the right of the screen is our new proposal. We have reoriented the parking and the entry to be on the west side of the building instead of the east, to eliminate concerns around the proximity to the neighbors, to reduce the noise from cars in the parking lots, as well as lights from those cars, lights from the lighting poles in the parking lots, and just general activity in the rear of the building. We have also minimized the front setback to accommodate this reorientation and maximize the distance of the building to the rear neighbors to address privacy concerns. We are eliminating the variances now and showing full-code parking requirements and no longer having two separate lots. And as such, we're providing all 51 parking stalls, eight of which are accessible. All of our parking will be on the west and north side of the building, and we are open to entering into a shared parking agreement with our neighbors to the north for the parking stalls on the north side of our site. So, as far as, as part of our vetting process, we also looked at developing a two-story option after getting comments regarding the height of the building. To convert the building into two stories and keep the number of necessary units and amenities required would mean lengthening the building by 72 feet. We are unable to accommodate that because it would include, it would increase the stormwater impact on the property because of additional surface area and the need to accommodate more water runoff. This would trigger needing more complicated and costly water management systems. Extending the building would also put the building closer to the eastern neighbors and increase the number of mature trees that we would have to remove. It would extend our timeline to completely redesign the project beyond what is possible, and the project is expensive enough without adding an additional million dollars in construction and costs to redesign the development. And in later slides, we'll go through more specifics related to the height comparison of our design to what is currently allowed under the OT zoning. And while we can't move forward with a two-story option, we are confident that our updated design addresses most of the feedback we've received while still providing important affordable housing for the community. And here is a closer look of that site proposal, showing the design changes. We're providing an extensive landscape buffer for the privacy of our residents and the neighbors. The landscape buffer is ranging from 75 feet to 103 feet from our building to the rear property line. We're keeping existing trees wherever possible, but also planting over 150 new trees across the site. There will also be a solid six-foot privacy fence at the north and east property line, along with the line of evergreen trees that will be eight-foot minimum height at the time of planting. At the south end of the site is our stormwater detention area, which is, will be a dry bottom retention, meaning that it will not have sitting water. And then, the box to the left compares our project under the institutional zoning compared to the current office transitional zoning. We are less than six feet in building height difference to what is currently allowed. We're providing a much larger setback to the neighbor to the east, and we're, we are building on a much smaller portion of the site. And in comparison, the medical office that was previously approved for the site would have had 135 parking spaces in a building that was much closer to the eastern lot line, as close as 35 feet. This is a view of the updated entry to the building, is now facing Arlington Heights Road, previously facing the rear neighbors. Some of the trees here are transparent on this rendering, so that you can see the face of the building. But there will be existing and new trees that will be planted to obscure the view of the parking and the building from the road. This rendering is from the southeast of the building, and shows the extensive landscape buffer and distance between our building and the property line, which is the fence line here to the right. And this rendering shows the neighbors, the east neighbor's side yard, and this is an approximation of the existing trees. And as you can see from this rendering, the building is largely obscured by existing trees and new landscaping, and is a considerable distance from the closest neighbor. This is a site section facing south and is looking at the north end of our building, which is where the building is furthest away from the property line to the east. The total distance of the proposed building to the east line is 103 feet. This is in addition to the distance of the rear neighbor to their west property line, which is approximately another 16 feet, for a total of building-to-building distance of about 119 feet. This is a greater distance than that neighbor is to its closest neighbor to their east. And as you can see from the sight lines shown here from the second-story window of the adjacent neighbor, due to the new and existing trees, the building will be largely obscured from the neighbors, and we'll work with village staff to ensure that the mechanical systems on the roof of our building won't be visible to the neighbors by providing mechanical screens that will be the same siding finishes as the upper levels of our building. This is a similar view as the last slide, but we're presenting a gray box to demonstrate a hypothetical office transitional building. And as you can see here, the current OT zoning allows for a rear setback as small as 30 feet, and a two-story building height of 30 feet. This slide demonstrates that what's allowed under current zoning would be significantly closer to the rear neighbors and almost as tall as our building. So, in summary, our design changes include the flipping and orientation of the building to present the architectural side to the Arlington Heights Road, flipping the parking lot to the west to reduce noise from cars, reduce lighting and activity at the rear of the building. And the design maximizes the distance to the east neighbors by providing a robust landscape buffer with mature trees and new landscaping that will obscure the sightlines between the building and the neighbors. And that is our presentation, and as we've mentioned before, we've taken your comments to heart. We've heard a lot of comments and feedback from this commission, from the village trustees, and from neighbors, and we hope that the changes that we've made address the majority of that feedback, and that you will vote favorably for this project. Thank you so much for your time.
Thank you. We'll turn to the staff presentation.
All right. Thank you, Chair Sherwin, and good evening to the Plan Commission. So, just to kind of set the stage here again, we're talking about this property at 1519 to 1625 South Arlington Heights Road. It is currently zoned in the OT. That's the Office Transitional Zoning District. And on the comprehensive plan, it is classified as offices-only, suitable for offices-only in that designation within the comp plan. There are four zoning actions that the petitioner is requesting approval from the village for. The first one is a preliminary plat of subdivision to consolidate the property into one lot. This is a departure from the previous proposal that was reviewed by the Plan Commission back in November of last year. That proposal was for a two-lot subdivision. The larger lot on the south would include the Grace Terrace facility, and a smaller lot on the north of the site was to be left vacant. Again, the current proposal is to consolidate the entire property into one lot as opposed to subdivide it into two lots. Additionally, an amendment to the comprehensive plan as requested, and that would be to reclassify this overall property from the offices-only classification into the institutional classification, which would be suitable for the I zoning district. Again, that is a departure from the previous plan that would have left that northern parcel within the offices-only classification and only rezoned the larger, second property on the south that would have the Grace Terrace facility into the institutional classification. Similarly, the property is being requested for rezoning from the OT district into the I institutional district. That district is suitable for the proposed permanent supportive housing district. I'm sorry, the permanent supportive housing facility. And that is, again, a departure from the previous plan, which would have left the northern portion in the OT classification. And finally, a planned unit development approval is required for this 25-unit permanent supportive housing facility. That is a base requirement in the I district. Any development in the I district is required to receive PED approval. There are no variations requested as part of this proposal. The previous proposal that was reviewed by the Plan Commission in November included three variations, one to reduce the parking, one to waive the requirement for a loading zone, and one for a lot with reduction in the proposed vacant lot on the north of the site. The petitioner's revised plan has eliminated the need for any of these variations. So, again, here's the site. You could see a bird's-eye aerial and a perspective aerial. The subject property is outlined in the red line. There's a red-shaded area. That is a portion of land that was purchased from the memory care facility to the south and will be incorporated into this development. And then, that memory care facility is outlined with the yellow dashed line to the south. To the north of the subject property is a vacant piece of land that is within the R1 zoning classification, single-family residential zoning classification. To the east of the site are single-family homes. To the south is the existing memory care facility. And across Arlington Heights Road to the west are some single-family homes, and a little further south are some institutional uses. So, a little bit of the background that's kind of led us to where we are today. As many people in this room and as the Plan Commission will recall, on November 8th of last year, the project received a three-to-four vote, not a four-to-three vote, a three-to-four vote in favor of a recommendation of approval. Because that was a three-to-four vote, the motion failed. And because that motion failed, the three variations that were associated with the project at that time required a supermajority vote from the village board for approval. That is a total of six out of the nine village trustees, and the mayor was excluded from voting on those variations. The project moved on to the village board in November of last year, and it had only five votes for approval, so it did not meet that supermajority for the variations. Given that lack of supermajority, the board unanimously passed a separate motion for the petitioner and staff to explore whether a two-story building on the site was feasible, and whether that configuration and orientation of the site and the entrance, the parking lot at the rear, could be flipped to facing the Arlington Heights Road elevation, with the intention to bring that project back before the village board at a future date. After that meeting, staff and the petitioner had multiple correspondence over the next several months to review several site plans. We reviewed over five different iterations of site plans, provided preliminary comments back to the petitioner, and worked with them to kind of address some initial concerns. One of those plans was for a two-story concept, and the petitioner ultimately decided, as you heard again this evening, that that concept was not economically feasible. And so, they did end up moving forward with a three-story concept for development. Based on a lot of the continuing feedback that we received from surrounding neighbors, and from the, you know, feedback that was provided by the village board, the petitioner held a second neighborhood meeting on April 16th to present their initial concept on the revised site configuration to some of the neighbors and to answer questions and address some concerns. The summary of that meeting was included in the materials to the Plan Commissioners this evening. The petitioner did answer a number of questions that evening from neighbors, but could not get to all of them, and so, they provided a separate document after the fact that answered some of the questions they were not able to get to during that second neighborhood meeting. But that essentially brought us to where we're at today. On June 6th, the petitioner submitted their revised concept that we are going to discuss this evening for the flipped development that eliminated all of the variations. Again, it's on one consolidated lot, would be rezoned into the I district entirely, rather than having one of those subdivided parcels in one district and the other in the, another district. 51 parking stalls have been provided. That meets code. It negates the need for a variation. And they did incorporate a dedicated onsite loading zone to meet that requirement as well. Because these changes involved a different set of zoning approvals, rather than just being able to go back before the village board for a final review of the project, it created the need for them to go back to the Plan Commission and hold a second public hearing, which is why we're before the Plan Commission again this evening. Again, the underlying zoning approvals changed because they were not, they were now consolidating the site into one lot rather than subdividing it into two, and then they were going to be rezoning the entire site as well, so. The reconfiguration of the parking to the western side of the site did cause the building to shift approximately 21 feet to the east. But that relocation of the parking lot from the rear building allowed the green space at the rear in between the nearest residential homes and the building to be increased in width, and the petitioner has added several additional plantings to create a dense buffer at the rear of the site. So, we discussed a lot of the, you know, land use issues during the previous public hearing on this property, and the minutes from that hearing were provided to the Plan Commission and are part of the record. The previous staff report was also provided to the Plan Commission, and is part of the record that outlined a lot of the, you know, these land use issues relative to this proposal. The operational aspects of this facility remain unchanged. They're still the same as what was proposed. It's just the site plan. Site plan has been reconfigured in this instance. So, there are some key areas that we're asking the Plan Commission to take into consideration this evening. First, we think it's important to consider whether a two-story building would be more appropriate in this location. This was something that was discussed at the last hearing. Excuse me. And was discussed when this went to the village board and has been a topic of discussion from the neighbors as well. So, this is one aspect that we think is important for the Plan Commission to consider this evening. Additionally, it's important to consider whether 51 parking stalls are really necessary on the site. The previous proposal had demonstrated 41 parking stalls would probably be in excess of what actual demand would be. And the Staff Development Committee agrees that 51 parking stalls are not really necessary at the site. It could certainly accommodate less and still meet projected parking demand. And even if all these 51 parking stalls are necessary, the Staff Development Committee finds that the dead-end parking row configuration at the northwest corner of the site is not optimal. The best parking lot design allows for more areas of ingress and egress, like a circular orientation that would not result in a dead end, so we think that there's a better way to redesign that dead-end area to allow for better circulation. to redesign that dead-end area to allow for better circulation and flow throughout the site. Also, one thing to consider is whether this new one-lot configuration is really optimizing the development potential for this area. Again, that previous proposal with one lot at the north to be reserved for future redevelopment would have really maximized the development potential in this area that could have been incorporated into any future redevelopment of that larger vacant land a little further to the north, further maximizing again, the highest and best use for this land in this area. And again, you know, we can consider the proposed change in land use. Is that appropriate for this location? That was discussed in depth at our previous hearing, but it is something that, you know, we can touch on if necessary. So here's the proposed site plan. Just a few items I want to touch on relative to the site plan, and should the Plan Commission wish to make a motion in favor of a recommendation of approval, we do have several conditions of approval that we would recommend, and I just want to touch on a few of those briefly. Most of them remain unchanged from the previous public hearing, but there are a few new ones that I would like to touch on. So there's an existing fence here, shown in purple on the site plan. The petitioner is also proposing another fence, shown in green on the site plan. We don't necessarily think that if this project moves forward, the new fence in green is really maybe the best fence in this location. It would kind of wall off the area right in front of the single-family homes to the rear, and this portion of fence kind of at the north would kind of be floating out in the middle of nowhere. So there, we think there could be a better configuration for this fence. Maybe it, you know, comes up like this, maybe it, you know, comes back like this and up here like this or some form, and we haven't really fully, you know, vetted where this fence would be optimal for its location. I think if this does move forward with approval, we would like to reach out to the two single-family homeowners directly to the east and see what their thoughts are for a fence here. So one of the conditions of approval is to have the petitioner continue to work with the village on this fenced location, and the color of the fence, we would request to be kind of a neutral earth tone color. This is going to be one of those PVC vinyl style fences, so, you know, we think that that neutral color would fit in better on the site. Additionally, this is the dead-end parking row that I referred to earlier. We have a condition of approval in there that would require a reconfiguration of this parking area to a more traditional circular traffic flow, and I'll get into that a little bit more right now. Finally, we do have a, another condition of approval, and you heard the petitioner mention it briefly about recommending a reduction in parking. The Staff Development Committee does not feel that the 51 parking stalls are necessary to accommodate demand. We think that some of this parking could be land banked, and those land bank areas are shown in green on this plan. And then the orange area would be eliminating this dead-end parking row, and so this would result in 32 parking stalls on the site. The petitioner's traffic study had an Institute of Traffic Engineers estimate of demand for parking at one stall per unit, so that would be requiring about 25 parking stalls. Again, this would yield at least 32 parking stalls, which would, you know, be suitable to accommodate any increases in typical demand beyond the 25, so this would certainly be suitable from a Staff Development Committee perspective to accommodate for the parking estimated demand for the site. If however, the project were to move forward with the 51 parking stalls, we would recommend, again, a more traditional configuration of parking on that northern parking area to allow for better ingress and egress. This would also help facilitate any future cross-connection to the land to the north if and when that land is redeveloped. So this, in closing, you know, when this project first appeared before the Plan Commission, again, it received a motion for approval that failed by a vote of three to four. During that hearing, the Staff Development Committee had recommended approval of the project, subject to several conditions. If the Plan Commission wishes to make a recommendation of approval this evening on the revised application, then we would suggest several conditions of approval that would be appropriate. Most of these, again, here are holdovers from the last time this project went to the Plan Commission, but I will highlight some of the new ones. Number one, in response to the motion by the village board, we would ask that the petitioner provide additional details and specificity to demonstrate why a two-story concept at this location is not feasible. Additionally, condition number 14 is new, and that's, you know, I touched on that earlier about eliminating that dead-end parking area, and condition 15, excuse me, condition 15 relates to the reduction in parking to 32 parking stalls. I would point out that if the Plan Commissioners wish to make that recommendation of approval and incorporate this condition in there, this would entail a variation to be granted as well. So on the motion sheet that you see before you, there is a highlight that outlines if you are supportive of this condition number 15, you would have to incorporate also a variation into the requested approvals this evening. But that being said, you know, this is a, definitely, you know, an issue or a project that, you know, warrants a lot of discussion from the Plan Commission. There's, you know, significant members of the community, a significant number of members of the community that have concerns. We do share from a staff level some of these concerns. We also are trying to, you know, balance what's appropriate for the neighborhood in relation to the community at large, and, you know, this, the Plan Commission this evening does not have an easy job. You've got to consider a lot of different perspectives here, not only the overall community, but whether or not the petitioner has done a suitable job in addressing some of the concerns by the nearby neighbors. So happy to answer any questions, but that will conclude the staff report this evening.
Well, thank you, Sam. Well done. Is there a motion to?
I'll make that motion.
I'll second.
There's a motion on the floor here to include the staff report into the public record. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? All right, motion passes. Staff report's in. Question, Sam. All of the, there were a lot of materials posted to the website. Thank you for putting all that together. That was a Herculean task, but you got it in there. And there were a lot of comments, there were a lot of questions, a lot of answers back and forth. Is that all in the public record as of now, or do we have to move to do that?
That is all part of the public record, yes.
All right. Great, thank you. All right, so we will now move to questions from the Plan Commissioners, if any, before we start the public hearing.
Yeah, I don't have any questions at this point, except for I'd like Sam to go back to the history slide and clarify one point. So if I, I'm trying to understand your second bullet point here. So if the commission either approves or doesn't approve, and there are no variations, does this say that the board only needs a simple majority, or does it need more than a simple majority?
Sure. Great question. I mean, I would encourage the Plan Commission to consider, you know, the application on its merits this evening and not necessarily think to what the village board may or may not do. If a variation is included, you know, there likely would be the need for some form of a supermajority by the village board, but, you know, really, we'll have to confer with our legal counsel to, you know, determine what the result of any motion this evening has and how that could impact the village board. There are a number of different ways that that could, you know, move forward, but, you know, again, I would encourage the Plan Commission to focus mostly on just the, you know, the issues at hand this evening, regardless of that impact in the future.
I want to rephrase that a little bit, so I just, and I agree with you, we should look at the merit, but I want to understand this. Let's suppose the Plan Commission doesn't approve it, there are no variations. Will a simple majority carry it at the board level?
Yes, it would.
Okay, I'd still on clarification. I have other questions, but I'd rather hear public opinion.
Sure, yeah. So clarification to the people in the room here. We are a recommendation body, and that's kind of what the discussion is, so whatever happens here, yes or no, that is not the final decision. It'll go to the board one way or another, so that's part of the context. Thanks, Lynn. Good question. Joe?
Sam, is it possible to briefly summarize what the village's goal is for affordable housing?
I mean, the village, it's a combination of things. I mean, the state has a 10% requirement for affordable housing in the village. We do meet that standard. Our goals for affordable housing relate at least, you know, programmatically to our inclusionary housing ordinance. That requires anywhere between 5 and 10% of all new multifamily housing developments to include onsite affordable units. So, I mean, really, those are the two kind of, you know, main programmatic goals of the village. I mean, we have auxiliary goals just to, you know, be a, an inclusionary, you know, community, but those are more general in nature.
And then one other thing, in the report, Plan Commission report, on page two, it mentions include all guidelines applicable with the exception to the inclusionary housing guidelines that requires preference be given to Arlington Heights residents. Why are we adding that?
So you're looking at the condition of approval.
Five B.
So, I mean, basically, you know, this was a motion that came out of the Housing Commission, and so that's just reflected in the, you know, the conditions of approval as part of this overall application. You know, we're asking that the, that the inclusionary housing and this development be catered towards Arlington Heights residences and businesses, that they be given maybe a first priority for tenancy here, to the extent that that's possible, given, you know, fair housing laws. If that's not something that's possible, we don't want to make it a requirement, but we're asking that if it is possible, that it be a part of their selection plan.
Okay, thank you. That's all.
And for clarification, Sam, you said the 10% guideline that the state has set for municipalities, I think in the materials you had, we were somewhere between 19 and 20%? Is that correct?
Correct.
Okay. And there is a naughty list in the state, isn't there for?
Yes, there is.
And we're not on it?
We're not on it.
Okay. Bruce?
I think I'll wait for public comment.
Mr. Ennis?
I'll wait for public comment.
John?
The only comment I have, and I still don't understand, the refusal to reduce the building from three stories to two stories. I see in the village board meeting that that was one of their requirements, and coming back to explain that, and I don't see that you really have explained that. You, can you provide some insight on that?
Petitioner can, yeah, thank you.
After a village board meeting in December, we did go back to the drawing board and consulted with our design team and our construction team to vet different options to try and accommodate revision of the design. That did include looking at a two-story option, but as stated in the presentation, redesigning the building would elongate the property significantly. That increased our budget, over a million dollars. That is outside of our budget. We would have to go for additional funding. We wouldn't be able to adhere to our lending requirements and our deadlines for our lenders to complete the project.
But it is possible to go with a two-story building. You have plenty of property there, which would allow it to be, the footprint to be enlarged. You have additional, you mentioned something about the stormwater retention pond. We have sufficient property there in the northeast corner of your property to provide additional stormwater retention or detention.
Yeah.
Standing this, I mean, you're basically saying it's not economically feasible. Is that what you're saying?
Correct. And Joshua Wilmouth, J O S H U A W I L M O T H. That is correct. There simply are not the resources available to be able to afford the longer, though somewhat shorter, two-story option and all of the site design that goes with it. It would make the development just financially infeasible, and it would not be able to move And if you want stormwater information.
Hi, Claudia Welp, C L A U D I A W E L P. For stormwater, yes, if you look at the site plan, if we were to extend another 20 feet, there's no way we'd be able to get that detention in that location, and everything flows downstream. The high side is at the north, the low is at the south side, and we're utilizing an existing pond to get our stormwater in. So if we were to extend the building, there's no way we'd get that detention above ground. We'd have to do a large underground system, which, as Denise was describing, is extremely expensive, so.
Okay, that's all I have right now.
Ms. Dawson, any comments?
I kind of have the reverse comment of yours, which is, I don't understand, I've read through all of the minutes, I was not at the, at the planning commission meeting. I don't understand why a two-story building is better for this situation than a three-story building, so I would be open to hearing about that, because I see, in addition to the, to the storage, the water storage, that we have additional green space, which is better for the community as a whole. You've got less building that provides less coverage. I'm not understanding, after reviewing the village board meetings and the planning commission meetings, I don't understand the argument why that's relevant to me, or why that is an issue. So I'd be welcome to hearing something I'm missing, but other than that, I'm, I'm open to listening to resident comments that are specific to why this building is not appropriate, not necessarily why guesses and assumptions based on residents in the building are not appropriate. That will be what I'm listening for during public commentary. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else? Okay. So at this time, we're going to open public comments, and since there are a lot of people, we'll have to do this in some kind of orderly fashion. As you come up, what we'll do is we'll start on this side of the room. If you're a resident of Arlington Heights, resident of Arlington Heights will go first. Anybody outside of Arlington Heights will go after the residents. We ask you to come up, state your name. You can give your address, you don't have to, but certainly, if you could give us some indication of where you may be, if you're south of Central or north of Central, if you don't want to give your exact address, some kind of description, that would be very helpful in understanding your perspective to the project. So residents of Arlington Heights on this side of the room, if we'd like to start, in the second row. Please, hi, please state your name.
My name is Lori, Lori Graianawi. Would you like me to spell it?
Yes.
G R A I N A W I. I live at 227 South Vale Avenue. I'm the co-president of the Housing Task Force. We're the group that first spoke with Full Circle about building here in Arlington Heights. We've actually worked on projects all in the north and northwest suburbs. I'm also a resident, and I'm also the mother of a child with a mental health condition. Hence my interest in supportive housing, permanent supportive housing. We've been working with Full Circle for quite a long time on this project. There's been a lot of back and forth. I really think, you know, they've really tried to listen to the commissions, to the boards, to all the residents. There's been two open meetings with the residents that were held. The last one, quite a number of people came, and there's just been a lot of, a lot of attempts anyways, to try to meet everyone's concerns. The building's been flipped, and that gave a lot more space to the residents. I know I've heard from people saying that they were concerned about people being too close to them, they were concerned about noise, and so hopefully that helps provide that along with all the trees that are there. Some people will say, you know, why do we need this in Arlington Heights? Don't we have enough? And there is another permanent supportive housing building in Arlington Heights called Hart's Place. It's on the north side. It's 15 units, and from the first that it was built, before it was even built, there were people trying to get on the waitlist. The, the, the building has, the apartment building's been full ever since it was built. There's a, the waitlist is so long, you can't even get on it. The waitlist has been closed, as with all the other buildings that we've been involved with. Hart's Place is a really lovely building. There, uh, the residents got together, along with the help of a, an artist, and they painted a mural in their opening corridor and the entryway. It's really beautiful. The residents also got together and they worked on a garden. You know, and I understand change is hard, and it's hard to accept new people coming in, and it's hard to accept if you're a single family, there might be an apartment building. But if you have any concerns, I can tell you Hart's Place is really lovely. And, and I encourage people to talk to other residents that are nearby. There really have been no concerns since the building has gone up. Um, people have asked, you know, why here? This isn't an appropriate spot. And when we first talked to village staff about where might be some good locations, we were given three locations. One turned out that somebody beat us to it. Crescent Place is there now. A third location, the, the layout of it just didn't work. It wasn't viable. And then this was the third location. Um, so we, you know, we really do try to find the right place. And I would say, if not here, then where? And if not now, when? So we ask for your support. Thank you.
Thank you. Um, there'll be no clapping. This is not a sharing section. This is not a sporting event. It's a public hearing.
Could we also ask that the, the rest of the audience keep their comments while people are speaking? To a minimum, in addition to the coughing, clapping, I heard a number of grumbling and-
Oh, yeah, no, there's no-
-objectionable comments.
Yeah, I'm sorry, I didn't hear that. If there are any comments, uh, it's coming from the person at the microphone. That's it, or, um, we're not gonna be able to keep you in the hearing. We have to keep order in this hearing. Uh, this is not, uh, we're not taking questions at this time. This is public hearing over here. Uh, there's no requests right now. Oh, uh, we're gonna start at this side of the room. We're gonna come to you shortly, and then you can make your request. The, um, next person in this row from Arlington Heights, three minutes. No one here. Next row. Okay, we need, we need to, we need to keep this going. Three minutes. Go ahead. State your name, where you're residing.
Arlen Gould, resident of Northgate. I want to thank you all for your service.
Start the clock, please.
A.R.L.N.G.O.U.L.D., as in our former kicker who never pronounced his name right.
Um, we need to start the clock, please.
It's a pleasure to be here. My interest in special education, mental health, and disabilities started when I worked for one of our governors who did not go to jail, a fellow named Dick, Dick Ogilvy. And at the end of the Ogilvy administration, when they were shutting all the mass warehouses for those with mental illness in Illinois, Ogilvy had a plan to develop local community facilities and housing for individuals with disabilities and mental health issues. Right in the communities, that program never got built. So today, 60 years later, we're no better off than Illinois was in 1972, when I left the governor's office. This is an amazing program. And you all know people in your neighborhood who have adult children with nowhere to go when their parents leave this world. I know of three right in my neighborhood in Northgate. The fact is, this fills a tremendous need. And Full Circle has met with the Chamber of Commerce, talked about ways of making jobs available to individuals moving into the, the program. And they've also met with veterans groups who are supporting this program. There's tremendous need for veterans for supportive housing. I can only say that, living in Northgate and being sandwiched between two, uh, permanent supportive care facilities, that being Hart's Place, minutes from my house, and Phil Haven, also minutes from my house, there are no issues. You can ask your police chief, there are no issues. You can walk the streets of Northgate, there are no issues. These are people like you and I. These are people who need a home and a place to live, and can, so they can be productive citizens in our society. That's what we're doing. That's the American way. And I'm hoping tonight, today, you will vote yes and help us move in the right direction in Arlington Heights, the village of good neighbors. So be a good neighbor tonight. Thank you for listening.
Thank you. Uh, next up in that row, and sir, in the front row, if you have a question, if you want to ask Sam Hubbard about procedure or process or anything, please feel free to do that. Good evening, ma'am.
Good evening. My name is Jean Wood, J.E.A.N.W.O.O.D. I am a member of, of First United Methodist Church. I'm, uh, first of all, I live at 1346 Village Drive in Arlington Heights. I'm a member of First United Methodist Church in Arlington Heights, and, which is also a con- part of the consortium of churches who are very concerned about people in need. And these children and young adults, or, or any adults who, uh, are disabled, really need a place to live. And I just want to share with you a story about my sister. She lives in Elmira, New York, and she bec- she, they discuss, they, she was diagnosed with mental illness in her teenage years, and it's been a rough ride. But for the past three decades, she has lived in a supportive housing building. It's five stories tall, not two stories, not three stories, but five stories. No, none of the neighbors around this building have complained about it. And I tell you, when I go to visit her, I go in the elevator, go up to the fifth floor. There are people in the elevator. Everybody, it's a community. Everybody helps everybody. You know, recently, my sister fell over, uh, uh, grocery cart. So she, they went to Walmart, got a new grocery cart, couldn't put it together. A resident down the hall helped her do it. So it is really a sense of community there. And the best part is, when my mom and dad died, they knew she was in a good place. And that's worth it all. Thank you.
Thank you. Uh, in the same row, anybody else? Okay, we'll go run one row behind. Resident of Arlington Heights?
I'm not residential, but it's my turn. I live in-
Okay, okay. Residents of Arlington Heights, yes, sir.
Thank you, Chair Sherwin. I appreciate the opportunity to, um, address the board tonight. Uh, my name is Keith Moons. I live in Arlington Heights as well. I would ask that the planning commission tonight approve this project with a yes vote that has submitted, the project as submitted by the petitioner. I think this project addresses the chronic shortage of affordable housing and permanent supportive housing that we have in Arlington Heights right now. Uh, this will be managed by Full Circle, which is a very reputable company. They have a very good experience in this type of housing and management. And, uh, I would ask again that you vote yes on this, and we would look forward to welcoming our new neighbors in Arlington Heights. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Anybody in Mr. Moons' row from Arlington Heights? Next row down? Any speakers? Yes, sir. Right here.
I'm going Harrison, uh, I'm, uh, I live at 215 West Minor in Arlington Heights.
Could you spell your name, sir?
Uh, Brian, H.A.R.I.S.O.N. Um, 215 West Minor Street in Arlington Heights. Or, other people know it as the Go-Get-He's House. This is a low-income housing facility. Um, I've lived there six years. I can go to the Jewel, go to the train, go to any restaurant in downtown Arlington Heights. I can take the ADA Paratransit, Pace Bus anywhere in the suburbs. They do provide door-to-door service. I can take dial-a-ride Pace Bus anywhere in Arlington Heights, Mount Prospect, and Rolling Meadows. They also provide door-to-door transportation. The resident of great, um, the residents of Grace Terrace will, will have the in- independence that I value. Ladies and gentlemen of the ga- gallery, there are no peer review articles saying people with disabilities, veterans, and people with intellectual disabilities are criminals, um. If there is, please, I encourage you to come up here and state that if you don't have any evidence of that, I suggest you sit down. Um, um, crime can happen anywhere. Um, and there's no evidence of, uh, failing ve- value, uh, home value. If there's evidence, I welcome you to come up here and ex- tell the audience that. Fifty, 51 parking spaces are necessary for us, because people with disabilities do drive. Uh, three stories is appropriate, because people with disabilities need a place to live. For example, Go-Get-He's Apartments has a two-year or plus waitlist, and... Thank you, ladies and gentlemen.
Thank you. All right. Um, I think we're, uh, back in the row behind Mr. Moons. Anybody from Arlington Heights in that back row? Yes, sir. Join us? Please state your name and-
Hello, everybody. My name is, uh, Jeffrey Bone. I've been an Arlington Heights resident for 10 years.
Sir, can you spell your last name?
B.O.H.N.
Can you speak up a little bit, please?
Sure.
And where do you, i- if you don't want to give us an address, that's fine, but where do you reside generally?
I live at the, sorry, I'm getting over a cold. I live at the corner of Evergreen and White Oak. Um, one of the, uh, issues that I have, um, contention with, um, obviously I'm against this, um, safety, the Full Circle properties, they don't discriminate against felons. I believe that there should be some sort of rule in these bylaws to say that we shouldn't be, allow felons to be moving into this, uh, community. Um, people keep talking about waitlists. There's other programs in Arlington Heights that have extensive waitlists. Look at the, our Park District for preschools, um, other public service programs. Waitlist, there's waitlists everywhere. Um, Full Circle is here to help people, but they're here to also make money. They're telling us that they can't put a two-story building in, because it's gonna cost them money, that it's too cost prohibitive. Somehow they got here in cars, they have nice clothes on, obviously they have money. It's not my place to tell, but if you're, you're, you're in the business to make money, you're not here just to give everything out of your nicest of your heart. Um, where this is supposed to be for veterans and disabled people, which I am in favor of. But when you ask Full Circle how many veterans are in all of their buildings, it's less than 1%, or 1% is what they said in the last meeting. It's mis- misrepresentation or bad information, I would say. I understand disabled people need parking spaces, but 51 spaces for 25 units, when the majority of them are single bedroom, it doesn't make sense to me. Um, that's all I have to say. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Same row in back, citizens of Arlington Heights, residents, I should say. Okay, next row behind, anybody from Arlington Heights? Yes, sir, standing up. Please join us up here. Give us your name and where you reside, either specifically or generally.
Yeah, my name is James Kokosoulis, K.O.K.O.S.O.U.L.I.S. I'm at 131 East Emerson. Can you hear me okay?
Yes, sir. Thank you.
Um, so I live about 100 feet away from the proposed, uh, three-story building. And, uh, from our backyard, my family would be looking at, uh, a three-floor apartment building about 100 feet away. My neighbor Bill would be ordering the apartment building just a few feet away. So, the building, uh, from loo- looking at this room, I see the windows there. So that's where the building would be, and we're probably right at that, uh, fire alarm. So there's gonna be clear view. If there's three floors, it's gonna invade our privacy much more than if there's two floors. But that looks to be about two floors. So, we're gonna have the entire building looking at us, you know, or being able to look into our yard. And we don't believe that that's fair. Also, I am concerned with, uh, how the facts have changed, uh, with Full Circle. The first meeting I attended, I was told that this building would be like Hart's Place. And Hart's Place was, was, uh, a, a beautiful place, an example, uh, of a beautiful place, housing veterans and people with disabilities. No offense to anyone with disabilities, however, a few days later, I saw a video from Hart's Place. Um, I saw stray bullets, one bullet going through one of the neighbor's windows. Drug dealings, gangs, et cetera. And the police arrest, that the police made an arrest from people living in Hart's Place. In fact, the police officer standing out there was the one that was involved with that case. So the location is extremely close to our house. If you look at Hart's Place, I drove by there, and the nearest home was about 1,500 feet away from, uh, from a, from a house. So this would be just a few feet away. So, uh, two stories, like I said earlier, would be, would be less intrusive. However, it would still be very intrusive. And, uh, if, if you guys would like, I could try to connect the video of the shooting, so you can see what happened at, at Hart's Place.
I think, uh, we've been, uh, submitted online, so we're not gonna do that here.
Thank you.
Thank you very much. Anybody else from Arlington Heights in the back row over here? Okay, we're gonna move to this side of the room. You, sir, I know you wanted to speak. You're up.
Mr. Chairman, Planning Commission Board members, and rest of the attendees. Good evening. My name is Mayur Shah. I live on Heaven Street, one block away from the proposed project location, and I'd like to draw your attention to the South Arlington Heights Road Corridor Plan, a detailed study done in 2018. The comprehensive plan seems to be a result of several months of work, and claims community inputs from property owners, businesses, plus 604 inputs received from a village-based preference survey. The survey results on the land usage preference for the corridor lists multifamily as the second last of the six priority responded by the respondents. Page 26 and 27 focuses on the specific seven-acre vacant office land with long-term vision and key development standards, clearly stating up to two floors, and designating this land for office use only. It cites specific example of memory care center as a possible institutional use. Since this plan establishes an overall strategy to guide the growth and development of the community, while also serving as a policy statement aimed at the unified and coordinated physical and social development of the village, I would hope the Planning Commission respects it and does not let the months of efforts and community inputs go into waste. My next point would like to make is based on the FOIA facts. From similar properties, inadequate screening at the concentration of low-income housing has allowed crime to creep in. Crime can breed gangs. Arlington Heights local news, we all know, has continuously shown us more and more crimes, be it the parking lot, of restaurant driveway, of neighbors, or even gas stations. When the frequency of crime goes up, it slowly normalizes, like what did in Chicago. Let us not, please, 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 let us not convert the South Arlington Corridor, the most beautiful gateway to our village, into a gateway for crime to creep in. Finally, the homes and businesses directly impacted by this project, which are just feet's away, not half a mile or a mile. Have communicated other fact-based concerns to Sam on July 11th to pass it on to you all. To summarize all of our arguments from email and what's being spoken today, the 2018 detailed study-driven strategy, the inadequate screening leading to crime and gang, the zoning change impact of multifamily occupancy, the drain on school and other shade services, the already existing diversity and saturation of subsidized housing around, the potential loss of property value, revenue for homeowners and village, the FOIA-based safety concerns, the recently downgraded safety index of Arlington Heights-
Okay, Mr. Shah, thank you for your comments. Your time is up.
And Full Circle is a awful partner. All the reasons we would like to request you to vote no.
Your time is up. Thank you.
Thank you.
Next in this row, same thing, please state your name. Next in this row, same thing, please state your name and your residence or general area, spell your name as well.
Chair Sherman, uh, Plan Commission, I appreciate the opportunity to speak here. Patrick Keavy, K-E-A-V is in Victor Y. I live at fifteen-fourteen South Douglas, that's two blocks away from the proposed development. I live there with my wife and five children. We've lived there for three years. We've been residents of Arlington Heights for fourteen years. We are long-term residents here, well-invested in the community where we live, and more broadly speaking, Arlington Heights. What I'm going to cover today with three of my, with two of my other neighbors is some of the FOIA data that we found. I think it's really important to note that none of this data was provided to us voluntarily by Full Circle. All of this data, we had to collect on our own, at our time and our expense. I also want to note that this is not complete data. We had to go property by property and make requests to courthouses, to police departments. We've requested full data from Full Circle, and we're going to go through in a little bit all the information we have requested from them that they have not provided. Our goal is full transparency. I believe that sunlight is the best disinfectant, and if you want to make a decision to approve this, and the board wants to make a decision to approve it, and the community wants to make a decision to be in favor of it, they should know all the facts. So the FOIA data that we found, um, we're going to go through the serious incidence rates of just a couple of facilities. Village Brook, Lake Zurich, Pearl Street, which is McHenry County, and fifty-one-fifty Northwest Highway. We're also going to go through the criminal backgrounds of some Full Circle tenants and their guests. We've asked how these people have gotten to be able to take residency and maintain residency within Full Circle facilities. We have gotten no response whatsoever. We've gotten obfuscation, we've gotten, we don't control that. There is no appropriate tenant vetting process. When you have five kids, young kids, and you live two blocks away from the facility, this is something you care about. So in Village Brook Apartments, this is Carol Stream. And remember, at the board meeting, Full Circle represented to the board, it would be wellness checks and lockouts. That's on video, you can quote them on that. The data that we found tells an entirely different story. They've misrepresented the data. It's another reason why Full Circle is not a good partner for the Village of Arlington Heights. We found fights and assaults, extra patrols, suspicious activity, overdoses and damage, uh, and criminal damage. Let's double-click on a few of these here. Discharges firearms on, on January first of two thousand twenty-four, eight shots going off, no arrests. Shots fired on, on September twenty-third, two thousand twenty-three, no arrests. Criminal damage to property, and we submitted this to the board. The police twice tried to get ahold of Village Brook, uh, or Full Circle. They never responded to their calls, the police had to shut the case. Then finally, on July sixteenth, two thousand twenty-three, a group of people with bats were found, were parading around like the area, and the police had to come to, uh, address that. This is the type of thing we saw at many different facilities that Full Circle operates, and again, this is just a subset of the data that we've been able to find.
Thank you for your comments.
Want to keep going here? Takes three people to cover this.
Good evening.
Good evening. I'm Brittany Bodnar. I live at the end of Haven Street, right next to Mayor. Uh, one to two blocks away from this development. I want to note, I moved here three years ago for my husband. We lived in the Lakeview neighborhood of Chicago. Um, I lived in Lakeview seven years, safe community, towards the end, started to change a lot. Um, one of my neighbors was actually mugged at gunpoint forty feet from my front door. So we decided it was time to leave, and, um, I actually grew up in Arlington Heights previously. It was a beautiful community, so I convinced my husband from Florida that Arlington Heights was the place to be. Um, now I'm not, not too sure of that. Um, so like Patrick was keying up, um, I found out about Full Circle two days before the December fourth meeting. Not very well-prepared myself, but this time I'm more prepared. Um, he mentioned that a lot of their incidents were wellness checks. Um, I'm in accounting, always trust but verify your information, and we verified and found that that was highly misleading. Um, so I want to point out two of their other PSH facilities for veterans and disabled, that's Pearl Street Commons and then five-one-five-oh Northwest Highway. Um, pointing out the volume first, very alarming. Um, I almost couldn't sleep after I watched or went through this because I was hoping for better response than this. But Pearl Street Commons, over five, five years, eighty-three pages, eight-three with two hundred incidents. Five-one-five-oh Northwest Highway, within one year, sixty-five incidents, and these weren't wellness checks. These were rescue calls, criminal trespassing, harassment, death investigations, theft, sexual abuse, attempted suicides, assaults and stabbings. And to quote one of the stabbings on Northwest Highway, stated that a fifty-nine-year-old man was stabbed in the head, chest, back, and all over, not just one stabbing, stabbed multiple times. Okay, non-PSH facilities, Liberty Lakes and Lake Zurich, Village Brook. I don't even know what to say about Village Brook. Um, I pulled FOIA for one of twelve buildings, one of the twelve locations there, a hundred and twelve incidents. If I extrapolate that over twelve buildings, that's thirteen hundred incidents, okay? Chokings, stabbings, overdoses, gunshots and deaths. What I want to know is what control do these folks have over these facilities? When I signed up to move to Arlington Heights, I didn't, I didn't sign up for this. Would you all sign up for this? Had you known that this was here? I checked the zoning. This wasn't the zoning when I looked. I do my homework. So, um, I didn't get through all my points, but I will say pulling FOIA isn't my job. I did it.
Time is up. Thank you for your comments.
I have to look out for the safety of my family.
Next person in... You're going to, okay, we're going to go out of order. You're going to continue? All right, please state your name and...
Good afternoon. Thanks for the opportunity to speak. Rocky Miro, R-O-C-K-Y-M-I-R-O, two-oh-two East Ryan Court. I live several blocks from the proposed development, which my, my neighborhood reminded me about fourteen hundred feet. So I'm here to comment about, um, my family, three young kids. We left the northwest side of Chicago for a safer neighborhood. Um, so my primary concern here is safety. And so obviously, looking at some of the FOIA data, some of the FCC tenants, specifically with respect to Village Brook Apartments, gentleman, last name Goodlow, uh, had an arrest sheet that dates back to twenty sixteen, twenty sixteen through twenty twenty-one. Twelve separate arrests, assault, battery, possession of drugs, um, domestic battery, it goes on and on. There's quite a bit of data, I think the, the board has kind of received this, the village has received this. Um, so my particular concern with this gentleman at Village Brook was the fact that even while under arrest, he continued to display symptoms of mental, uh, incapacity. Uh, shouting out nasty things, shouting out he'll kill his wife, various things like that, very disturbed behavior of an FCC tenant. Other tenants, it kind of goes on and on. So several, three other tenants, one at McHenry, one at Pearl Street, actually two at Pearl Street. Um, last name Hedlin, twenty-eight pages of FOIA data. Some of the criminal history includes stolen vehicles, possession of controlled substances, drug addiction, burglary, harassment, um, multiple times in jail, not sure where the background check was there. Another tenant at Pearl Street, same thing, six pages of FOIA data, controlled substances, arrest, violence, uh, discharging a firearm. Another Pearl Street, three pages of FOIA data, harboring a fugitive within the property. So again, you know, when we talk about safety, I'm very concerned. I'm fourteen hundred feet from the proposed development, three young children, I'm very, very concerned. So this talks to how we vet, how the FCC tenants are vetted and the overall management of their properties. Thank you.
Thank you for your time. Um, before we move on, uh, just a reminder, two things. One, we, um, we want to make sure we're, um, moving along and, um, not repeating a lot of the same material. So if you do agree with the speaker, you can mention that, but we want to make sure we're, uh, addressing the point and not being too repetitive. A lot of, um, uh, statements related to opinions and questions were raised on the vetting of tenants and occurrences at other facilities. I'll just, at this point, if the petitioner would like to address the questions that were asked by the, um, that could help, uh, you know, rather than saving everything to the end, if you want to address some of those questions and points that were made by the public.
Yeah, I'll, I'll be brief. Again, to your point, these are questions that have come up at multiple community meetings and in front of, uh, village board. Uh, our response remains the same, which is that, uh, we are committed to the safety and the wellness of our residents and to the communities that we work in. That is why we have such a good working relationship with the police and first responders in the communities that we work in, which is information that I believe staff and, uh, village, uh, got to see both at our, uh, earlier Plan Commission hearing and also at, uh, full village staff. Uh, we take our relationship with our villages and our residents and our neighbors very seriously. Uh, and we let the, uh, letters of recommendation and the support from the communities that we work in, uh, carry the weight because no one, or half the people in this room, aren't going to believe what I say anyway. So, thank you.
Uh, excuse me. Um, do you have any, um, of, 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 of the particular questions that were raised by, by the, um, the public? They asked about vetting and circumstances, uh, you know, circumstances about how you're vetting your tenants and how you're, um, uh, making sure that there's the criminal, I mean, can you explain a little about your process with the vetting and criminal background?
Yes, I can. Um, we engage in a background check for, uh, criminal and credit screening, uh, as well as income and employment and asset verification for all of our residents. Uh, that includes everyone who is on the lease, not just the head of the household. I, I'm sorry, every adult who is on the lease, not just the head of the household. Um, those, uh, background check policies are updated periodically by us and are, uh, updated as the local, uh, state and federal laws change around tenant screening. Uh, so we are always complying with all screening ordinances, including here in Cook County, the Just Housing Act. Um, our screening looks...
Explain the Just Housing Act for the audience, please.
Uh, the Just Housing Act is a Cook County, uh, act that, uh, requires that all landlords for all housing can only look back three years for, uh, criminal offenses and that just having a criminal record is not in and of itself grounds for, uh, rejecting a housing applicant. That anyone with a background, uh, a criminal background history must be individually screened to see how that history interplays against their ability to live in that building. Uh, it is certainly an onerous and intensive process to do that level of screening for every resident. It is also something that ensures that, uh, people who are exiting the justice system, who have served their time, have a place that they can return to and that we are not increasing and exacerbating the homelessness problem throughout our state. Uh, so in summary, we comply with all of the, uh, various local, state and federal requirements for screening. We update our screening as those update and as we get information about ways in which our screening is either overly aggressive or not capturing information that we need to capture in order to do the type of vetting that I'm describing to you.
And do you have any other, um, answers to any of the questions that were raised previously on the, on the, uh, conduct at your, uh, facilities or no?
Again, I would refer to the, uh, the letters of support and recommendation from the villages in which we work.
Okay, thank you.
Just a clarity here. You just said that the, the screening process is very onerous, and you described how bad it is and how hard it is to do. My question is, do you do it?
Yes.
You do?
Yes.
Okay. Can I ask one further question?
And I would hope that any landlord who comes up in front of you says the same thing.
Do you have a follow-up question?
Uh, before you sit down, I have one other question.
One other question from a condition, uh, on your, what you said.
My apologies.
We've been hearing a, a lot from some of the neighbors on research they did where they're discovering all this crime. And from what I've heard in the past at the prior Plan Commission hearing and, uh, and tonight, is that there's little or no crime in, in these facilities. When these neighbors, you, you had a neighbor meeting, you had a couple of them, when they asked you these questions, why didn't you get back to them with some of this data?
We gave them answers. We are not going to give specific information out about any of our residents. We do not want to dox our own residents.
I'm talking about the level of, you know, gunfire, of people with, you know, criminal activity on properties, it sounds like, in police reports. That's not what I've heard from you guys in the past.
I'm sorry, I maybe don't understand the question. Can you rephrase or repeat?
The neighbors have, they have indicated that they have asked for information, some of this information. They've gone out and dug it up themselves. If they asked you for this, you just didn't provide it to them, or you did?
Well, a- as you've just heard, they claim that we provided them some level of information about the criminal activity and history at our properties, uh, but that the information that they have is different than what we've provided. The net result is that instead of trying to, you know, convince that my facts or your facts or what have you, we simply refer back to the, uh, testimony and the letters of support from the first responders in the communities that we work in because they have, uh, you know, a vested interest in their community and in our work with them in a way that I think is much more believable and more valuable, particularly to opponents, than what I as a developer might say.
But as, but as a board who is considering a project like this for our community, we don't like just to hear letters of support. We want to know the facts.
Understood.
Okay, thank you. Uh, we'll continue with, uh, additional, um, over here, Arlington Heights resident?
Yes.
Thank you. Please state your name and where you reside.
Hi, my name is Michelle Ashoot. I was here the last time, um, by the way, last year. M-I-C-H-E-L-L-A-S-C-H-O-O-T. I live two hundred and fifty feet away from the proposed project. Um, but before, can you hear me?
Yes.
Um, before I actually, I wanted to start with pointing out that none, me and, uh, my neighbors are not against the project. We are against the location, being, that being, it's in the middle of single-family homes. And of course, now coupled with all our factual data that we have found via, um, FOIA. Um, with that being said, I am actually, um, I wanted to correct Mr. Joshua Wilmouth's statement that we claim that they have provided us information. It is actually the opposite. They have not provided us anything, which led us to actually trying to do our own research via FOIA. But you have heard enough about the FOIAs on police reports, so I'm not going to go there. What I wanted to actually discuss about is the fact-based developer integrity concerns. I'm actually glad that you, um, have brought Mr. Joshua Wilmouth here to talk about a few things. Um, thank you, Sam, for distributing that letter to, um, uh, the commissioners. But I wanted to read here, because he had actually mentioned that they have received letters of support from first responders. And they did write that here, so, um, they have written that we foster strong relationships with the first responders and have received letters of support or recommendations from many of the police departments where our properties are located. One such property is Creekview, twenty-five-unit senior living reach in Richmond. Full Circle Communities developed in two thousand seventeen. The chief of police of Rich, Richmond wrote a letter testifying. I believe the Creekview community is an excellent addition to the Village of Richmond, and the Village of Richmond Police Department prides itself in on the close working relationship we have in our residents and the community. You guys have that said letter and email. So with that being said, I bring that up because that is actually a false claim. That is not true. Um, actually, I personally spoke to the chief of police, and this, you have that in front of you. That letter was actually for a thank you for having the coffee at Creekview Community. The chief of police is thanking them. The sad part is, they dissected the letter, took apart, that actually will benefit their agenda and claim that it is a letter of support. That is wrong. Now, another point i- is the false claim on screening. So I just want to write down here, these are the, from the Q and A from the library meeting. Um, so who will check and vet potential tenants? Perspective tenants will go through the Housing Authority of Cook County. Can you guarantee that veterans and disabled will be in the facility? Our tenant selection plan, which is approved by our funders, including the Illinois Housing Department of Authority and HACC. But it's all here.
Thank you. Appreciate your time. All right, um, resident of Arlington Heights up here?
I certainly am.
All right, state your name, please, and generally where you're residing.
Hi, my name is Martin Klos, M-A-R-T-I-N-K-L-O-S. Hi, my name is Martin Klos, M.A.R.T.I.N.K.L.O.S., and I am a resident of Hart's Place, 120 West Bowser. Hello, neighbors. I have lived at Hart's Place for four and a half years. I love my apartment. It is 10 minutes, within 10 minutes of my parents and my place of employment. I love my neighbors in my building. I love them. There's nothing wrong with them. I have a doctor's office within walking distance of me as well as plenty of stores and restaurants. I love visiting the nearby parks and trails. The staff that service our building are wonderful. And I hope we can turn this village of good neighbors into this village of great neighbors by building Grace Terrace. And also, like that gentleman who spoke about Hart's Place, have you ever been to Hart's Place? Could I show you around? Because yes, there was a shooting there, but there was no victim. That tenant was arrested, evicted, and jailed, and that was more than three years ago. And we have never, we've just been wonderful since. There's shit happens at every building. Did you hear about Arbor Lakes the other day in the Daily Herald? Well, there was a murder there. Is that affordable housing? No, it's not. So, it could happen anywhere. All these statistics about crime are really half-baked. And disabled people are good people. And you know what? Besides minorities, disabled people are the hardest-working people at their jobs. So, why can't we give these people, like some of my friends and supporters and family back there, why can't we give them an even shake? Because there are really great people and there's criminals everywhere. It's not just in buildings for disabled people. There's nothing wrong with disabled people, whether they're mentally ill, have developmental disabilities, or they're veterans, or they are addicted to substances or becoming clean from substances. There's really nothing wrong with these people. And I don't know where all these statistics are coming from, but they're really ridiculous. And I mean, if you're asking Josh and his staff, I think they're being straight with you and they're being fair with you. And you know what? Some of my neighbors, they even fly the thin blue line and the thin red line. So, there's a lot of diverse people even within a building. And you know what? We have a good relationship with the police.
Thank you, Mr. Klos.
Okay.
Your time has expired. Thank you for your comments. On this side of the room, we'll come back up front. I think we might have missed a few people. Arlington Heights residents? Thank you. Please state your name and where you reside.
My name is Josh Shoot. I live 250 feet from where the building will be that flipped now faces my house. But I'm actually reading a letter from one of the business owners that's going to be next to the property. He wasn't able to make it. It's Dr. James Keikos, 1401 South Arlington Heights Road. Said, "Twenty years ago, I made a career decision to invest millions of dollars in a facility to house my growing dental practice. I was a commercial renter for many years in buildings just west of Northwest Community Hospital. When I purchased the land for my new dental office on Arlington Heights Road, I went through a painstaking process of design and build procedures to assure that my new building was complimentary to the neighborhood and respectful of my new neighbors and their properties. I was subjected to repeated architectural modifications and design changes because the Village of Arlington Heights required me to fulfill and comply with the many code and village ordinances. In fact, the changes to my plans were so numerous that it left me at the point of literal financial ruin. I remember quite vividly the most important detail of the entire project was that I could not build a multi-story building as I wanted to, which would allow me future growth potential without relocation. The village would not, under any circumstances, allow for that. Upon my repeated attempts and multiple design modifications to show the village that my architectural plans were beneficial and respectful to the impact of the neighborhood, the village continuously denied my requests. Fast forward 20 years later, I am now faced with having to design and move my practice to a new location. My eldest son has now joined my practice and my other son is now a neurologist and will specialize in interventional neurological treatments for patients with strokes, Parkinson's, Alzheimer's, and other debilitating diseases. I have expanded my practice by adding another location in Naperville, and I planned on building a much larger facility to house both our dental practice and my son's neurological institute on the properties just south of my current location. That plan is now on hold. I will not invest that kind of money knowing that my facility will be next to low-income housing facility. And considering the element and security concerns, I can confidently say that I am forced to reconsider my new location elsewhere. It is not a question of whether this type of facility has the right to exist, but rather, does that facility have the right to be built in this location? Why does this project that is proposed qualify to have a special variance to allow its construction? Why do they get to build a multi-story facility and I wasn't? Why did I have to follow the rules and comply with the village's ordinances and laws? This plan for Grace Terrace should be denied on all aspects. The double standards here are glaring and overwhelming."
Your time is up.
I vote no.
Thank you for your comments. We have in the front row here, Arlington Heights. Good evening, sir. Please state your name and...
Eric Mueller, 501 East Haven, 38 years in Arlington Heights, 18 years at this address, a block and a half from the subject project. Sam talked about a comprehensive plan before. When you do a comprehensive plan, you set up zoning. This subject property was zoned office transitional. It was office transitional and many of my neighbors were taking their life savings and buying their single-family homes. It was office transitional when two new homes were basically just built on my street. It was office transitional when adjacent neighborhoods were expecting offices open 9:00 a.m. to 5:00 p.m. No evenings, no overnight activity. It was office transitional when our tax-paying residents expected very limited weekend activity. It was office transitional in a skyline and aesthetics on Arlington Heights Road. It was office transitional when existing offices, as you just heard, were asked to comply with the requirements. Now, people from outside our area want to come in and change these rules. When neighbors put their life savings on the line to buy a house, single-family house for their children, they didn't expect multiple housing of 25 highly-concentrated living quarters. When our neighbors committed their life savings, they didn't expect to have nighttime noise, 24-hour habitants with loud conversation, music, slamming doors, and overnight guests. We even heard in the presentation, "Reduce noise." They didn't say eliminate noise, reduce noise. Our neighbors turned around who want to become part, fabric of this community. They don't want outside lights, multiple banks of outside lights, car lights, door slamming. When they put down their life savings, they didn't expect a patio in the back that's going to have outside noises with chances of alcohol, parties, any kind of problem. And most of all, they didn't expect, when they brought their young children here, to introduce criminal types inside Arlington Heights for the risk of their family. Our neighborhood is a very, very ethnically diverse neighborhood, recognized as one of the most diverse in our neighborhoods. English is a second language for most of our neighbors who are afraid of dealing with the government. Nowhere in their land, when they put down their roots, did they ever expect to see a three-story building, a three-story building, multiple tenants placed in their backyard, not when it was zoned residential. We looked at a building heist of third floor. I don't care what kind of lipstick you put on it. It's a third-floor building in a residential area. All the neighboring buildings that we looked at are one-story. We have over 200 people who have signed up in our neighborhood, signatures, their phone numbers, telling them that they're against this project. In making your decision tonight, we want to turn around that we are good people, we're not against the project for helping people. My wife and I personally have volunteered for many of these type organizations. We're good citizens. We already bought our homes living next to 190 units that are subsidized housing. 190. We made that choice.
Thank you, Mr. Mueller.
Don't pall anymore on top of us.
And just for the record, your presentation, could you just turn around and show that to the group? We're not looking for comments or opinions, but just so everybody can see what was shown by Mr. Mueller. Thank you. We're not looking for comments. Thank you. First row, please. Anybody else from Arlington Heights here that wants to talk?
Joe Kiwi, 208 West Noyes. I lived there for four years with my wife and our young daughter. We would have not bought the property if this project was already established at the time when we were looking for our home. And for all the reasons that the rest of the group has articulated, I strongly oppose this project. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Next row. Yes, sir.
I just have a little...
All right, come on.
My name is Linda Dustin, 404 East Parkview Court. I'm, well, I'll just read kind of what I said here. Wait, first...
Could you ask, tell us generally where that is? Can you just, generally where that address is?
Pardon me?
Generally where that address is located compared to the site?
I live one block east of this.
Thank you.
It was going to be said in here. I delayed actually leaving on my vacation by three days so I could attend this meeting. It's that important to me for you to understand how I feel about this pending project. I live about one block east of the 1519 property. I understand how the Board of Arlington Heights feels about affordable housing by the multiple affordable housing projects that are presently in, you know, being done and approved. As a resident living in unaffordable housing, who has paid high taxes for over 40 years, my feelings and opinion of this project should really be considered and honored. The proposed piece of land should not be approved for the Full Circle project. It is the wrong location. Period. I implore you to vote against allowing a three-story eyesore to be built amongst the beautifully established, high-end homes and especially so close to my neighbors' homes. Your vote of no is crucial in making many current homeowners happy versus those that would occupy 25 apartments. Thank you.
Thank you for your time. Same row, anybody from Arlington Heights? Yes, sir. Come on up and join us.
Hi, my name's Gabe Bodnar. I live at 303 East Haven Street, next to some of these guys, about a block away from the proposed project. I wanted to address some of what was asked for by Commissioner Dawson around physical location. Hart's Place keeps getting used as a sister property or an example. Hart's Place is, does not have any single-family homes in the immediate vicinity anywhere near what we have here. There are several blocks at most before you get to actual residential areas and their townhomes or their condo buildings. It's not the same. They didn't do it there. Why are we even thinking about doing that here if we're considering this is sister property? You ask why not three, or why is three stories a problem? I mean, we talked about it before even here. I won't hash that out again, but it is so close to everything else, it doesn't fit. Just aesthetically, it's not a fit either. But on top of talking through some of that, I also want to call attention to what it can do for home, against home prices. I mean, we've asked Full Circle what the impact would be with home prices, and we've got an analysis that they gave us that showed it wouldn't really have an impact. The problem is that the analysis was done within a mile radius. A mile radius is a huge amount of households to include into a property analysis where most of those households are not going to be able to see or interact or have anything to do with this proposed property that's around it. A mile from this proposed site would extend all the way to the Holmes Junior High on the other side of the neighborhood. They have no, they can't see this. They have no interaction with this. They have nothing to do with this. So, why are we getting analyses that are that large? And why, when we ask for new analyses for a smaller radius, they're not provided? I'm led to believe, since they're leading to believe, that we don't care what they have to say. I don't think they want us to know or want us to see what they have to say or what that analysis would have to say. Being able, and just for further proof that the analysis should be at a smaller radius, we've done some of our own homework, again, looking at other low-income housing facilities that, and the radius of households within them. What's very clear and obvious is when you're within a couple blocks, it's substantially lower household prices. And the farther out you go, the more expensive some of those households get. That's not what this is. That's the opposite of what's going on within our neighborhood. We have several million-dollar households that are bringing in a ton of revenue for Arlington Heights through property taxes. They're saying they're going to bring in $50,000 a year in property tax. If all of these households that are that expensive go down in price, we're going to lose money. Arlington Heights is not going to make money on that. Thank you.
Thank you. Before we move to the next person, would the petitioner like to respond to the question of the property value assessment and whether there was any additional work done to reduce the radius of the comparative properties?
We pulled information from the Multiple Service Listing, the MLS, within a one-mile radius of affordable housing in Arlington Heights and in other, in our properties as well. We use the same metrics that are used for state and local analysis by the Illinois Association of Realtors. And we were not asked specifically for a lower analysis, a smaller analysis. The response that we received was that the metrics that we used were not efficient, but without clarification as to what.
Well, I think if you're going to be at the next hearing, it'd be a recommendation to reduce that radius down for your presentation to the village board so that you can answer that question adequately.
Sure.
Thank you. We'll continue with the public here on the left-hand side. Yes, sir.
Thank you, everyone. Dave Divito, 210 Ryan Court, 20-year resident Arlington Heights. D.I.V.I.T.O. I think he should know how to spell my name. I was eight years on the zoning board, two years as chairman. I've been through these meetings. I appreciate what you all are doing. I know this is no small task, but it is okay to say no. I've sat through many of them. I've sat through enough to where I've seen neighbors in support. I've seen them in opposition of. And you have to understand and weigh all the, what's going on in the sentiment of the room as well as the facts on hand. I'll stick to like what I know when it comes to like the zoning. The altering of the character of the neighborhood, I think we've said it a few different ways. I'll even talk about the design of it being, everything else on that block is going to be brick and block. We are lowering our standards and putting a lesser-quality product on that street. The plight of the owner is self-inflicted. They bought the property without contingencies. They are trying to push forward an agenda of their own, citing all of these different challenges that they're facing, but truly, it is their own. It is of their own fault. It is not something that we are imposing on them. They chose the property. They could have chosen in different suburbs. They could have chosen in anywhere else. Hart's Place, real quick, two-story, 18 units. So, obviously, their builder must be better. The second community meeting that we had, the narrative was fully controlled. It wasn't dialogue. It was, the Q and A was fully controlled by FCC. There was no third-party collecting of, I should say, independent third-party. There was no third-party collecting of, I should say, independent third-party, collecting of the questions and the responses being read off. So the request of the, the cost reduction, or the price reduction, was specifically asked by my neighbor during that meeting. The information was still not provided. So I'll close with, is there a need? Sure. Does it need to be Arlington Heights burden? Not sure. Does it need to be the south side of Arlington Heights? Not sure. Does it need to be this builder? No. This builder has not been operating with transparency, has not been showing good faith within the residents that are going to be directly impacted by. So if I had to choose, and if I was sitting in your position, my vote would be staunchly no. Appreciate your time. Thank you for everything.
Thank you, sir. All right, next up in Mr. DeVito's row, anyone from Arlington Heights? All right, here we go.
Thank you all. Good evening. My name is Colleen Heraty. I'm H-E-R-A-T-Y. I'm on East Haven, about a block and a half, 20-year resident of Arlington Heights. I have been moved to action via numerous emails, attending village meetings, meeting with my trustee in my home. I've been holding a protest sign on the side of the road, things I never thought I would do while happily living in this town. I have two points to discuss, hopefully not repeating. This developer, self-proclaimed entrepreneur, makes many unsubstantiated marketing claims. One such claim, onsite staff will be provided by FCC to help the residents. Then, it was corrected to, one onsite community manager will be there. When pressed, it was further defined as, one onsite manager will be there from nine to five. Oh, and a phone number will be provided to residents to self-report any misdeeds they see. However, one look at Indeed, at Glass Door, or even Google, and it tells you a different story. Among the job postings on Indeed, FCC is currently looking for that one community manager for Lake Zurich, and also that one maintenance manager. They also need that same one community manager at the McHenry location. Their rating is two-star. Even the semi-positive write-up I found on Glass Door mentions that he's so overwhelmed by being tasked with managing too much without any training or support. He doesn't know if he can keep going. How can they claim, "All will be well, and we will be safe if no one is there manning the store"? Number two. My other concern is that in perpetuity addition to the 10% the village, I guess, has requested that. So if we give them in perpetuity owners, you know, ownership, and let's say they go out of business, let's say he decides to take his entrepreneurial endeavors elsewhere, who then runs the show? Arlington Heights will lose the ownership or the authority to help out on that property whatsoever. It would go to the Chicago Housing Authority of Cook County. There's a long list of struggles there. We'd be at the bottom of the list. Please vote no. This is not the right partner for this wonderful, wonderful community. Thank you.
Thank you. Would the petitioner like to address staffing? There was some question raised. What exactly is going to be staffed here?
Happy to. Also happy to address that the, the second part of that question first, which was the affordability in perpetuity running with the land. That is a condition that the city or the village has requested. Full Circle is a nonprofit. I don't own Full Circle. I run Full Circle. I work for the board of the nonprofit. And so for long as we are a-going concern, then that board will nominate or replace me with my successor, and so on and so forth. That is who would own the property. In no instance would the Housing Authority of Cook County own the property. And again, that land use provision is specifically in there at the request of the village to ensure that it stays affordable in perpetuity.
But, so, yeah, so the perpetuity the village requests, you would be required by HUD for, is it a 30-year minimum on this project?
That's correct.
Okay, so you're, you're required to do 30 years. The village says, "We want our projects in perpetuity."
Right. Or if we need to make a change to that, then we have to come back to the village to seek a change, because that would be part of the underlying zoning approval, is my understanding.
Well, it would also be a restrictive covenant against the property, right?
I'll let the attorney speak to that. But to the staffing.
Staffing.
Yes. Yes, we have a couple of postings open right now for positions. I will also say that we have other properties that are larger than 25 units, that have more than one full-time office position. The net result is that for a property of this size, 25 units is not, a full-time property manager is not necessary to ensure the health, wellness, safety, lease compliance, et cetera, of our residents. But we are aware that our residents benefit by having more present staff on site, and so we are providing one full-time property manager. For Pearl Street Commons, we would also provide a part-time, approximately four days a week, maintenance person. I'm sorry, not Pearl Street Commons, at Grace Terrace. A three-quarter time maintenance person at the property, as well as somewhere between one and three case management staff who are on property at more odd hours, weekends, evenings, et cetera, to meet with residents in their homes.
So is there any 24-hour coverage? It doesn't sound like that's a.
There is not.
Thank you. All right, we're going to go back to this. Yes, ma'am.
Good evening. My name is Helen Barcham, B-A-R-C-H-A-M. I live on 8 West Emerson Street, so it's kind of a cross diagonal from my house. I've lived in Arlington Heights for 13 years, raised my two boys there for safety reasons. The current place, I've been there for a year and a half. When I bought my house in April of 2023, I was up against 30 people bidding for the house, wanting to buy it. There's a house now on our street that's for sale, and it is not going. And it's probably due to this project, and people are waiting to see what's going to happen. So when people talk about housing not being desirable, that's a proof of it. I'm a real estate attorney for 19 years as well, so I know the market. I know how properties go. Our neighborhood has a lot of diversity. We actually have disabled people in our neighborhood, Polish people, veterans. My next-door neighbor is a veteran. My parents are immigrants. They live on East Noyes, which is two blocks from the proposed area. We have our parks and our kids, and like everyone has said, the statistics, the evidence is there. It's hard evidence. It's not he said, she said. So the safety and integrity of our community is what's important to me, and that's why I'm against this. I do have disabled family members. I do have veterans in my family. If this building was going to be only for veterans, and it would be vetted properly, of course I wouldn't be against it. But I don't think that's the case, and we've proven that with only 1% being veterans from the evidence shown. Yeah, so I take it to heart. I love the area. I want my kids to grow up safe. But again, I would consider, even though I've moved here, I've lived here for 13 years, and I moved here a year and a half ago, I would probably move out of Arlington Heights if it were built. So I'm opposed against it. Thank you.
Could I ask you real quick to clarify, you said 1% veterans? Where did you get that information?
That was in one of the FOIA facts that they had presented. Yep, thank you.
Would the petitioner like to comment on that? There was a, do you have any information on the percentage of veterans at your locations?
I do, and we've, this is already included on the information on the website and et cetera. At Pearl Street Commons, which is again the most similar in concept to what we're describing here, there are a total of 30% of those 25 units that are occupied by a person who is a veteran or a veteran with a disability. The remaining 70% of the units are occupied by persons with a disability. So there, 70% person with a disability, 30% veteran. At 5115 Northwest Highway, another development that was referenced, our project target goal was 25% of the property would be veterans or persons with a disability. We've achieved another 22% person with a disability, so that would be 39% against our targeted goal of 25. At Torrance Place, our target was 25%. This is in Lansing, Illinois. There, it is 2% veterans, 29% persons with a disability, for a total of 31% compared to our target of 25. And then at 15th Street in Dubuque, Iowa, with a target of 25%, we achieved a total of 42% of the property, half of that being a person with a disability, 21%, the other 21% being veterans. So in all cases, we have met or exceeded our target goals, and I don't know where the 1% information came from.
You, of all the percentages you just mentioned, do any of them have criminal records? Or can you answer that?
I can't say definitively one way or the other. I mean, my suspicion is that yes. Yes, they do. Some of them. I do not know how many off the top of my head. But again, you've heard some of the screening that we go through. Having a criminal record in and of itself is not disqualifying. There are certainly criminal incidents and criminal convictions that are disqualifying, but to your question.
Thank you.
All right, thank you for addressing the question presented by the public. Next row, I think we've gone through this road. We have one in back here. Residents of Arlington. Okay. Yes, that's the correct row.
Thank you, Commissioner Sherwin and other esteemed commissioners. My name is Richard Wetzel, W-E-T-Z-E-L. I live a block away from the Full Circle site. I've lived there for 25 years. I've raised my family there, and it's a great neighborhood. And it's, it's a neighborhood. It's a residential neighborhood. And a three-story facility is not appropriate for this neighborhood. The only thing I've pretty much taken away from why it's, they're not doing the two-story is it costs too much money. That's not my problem. That's not the neighborhood's problem. That's their problem. And I think they should have perhaps spent a little bit more effort finding a better place, more suitable place. We hear about this Hart's Place, and what's the closest residential place? It's quite some distance. And I would also have, I also have great concerns about the nighttime activity. As I say, this is a neighborhood, and I'd like to maintain the great neighborhood that we have. And I want to thank you and want to impress upon you that this is not the appropriate location. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Anybody else in Mr. Wetzel's row there from Arlington Heights that would like to speak? Yes, sir.
Okay, my name is George Orahem Chahashi. You want me to spell it?
Yes, sir.
I'm not going to take you all day. Okay, O-R-A-H-E-M-C-H-A-H-A-R-B-A-K-H-S-H-I.
That's exactly how I thought it would be spelled.
My friends here covered everything that was. I'm not going to go through that. Only thing I want to say, as I heard the gentleman here talk, they're more worried about checking people's credit so they can get paid, rather than their background check. Okay, and these are facts, what these people brought up. And whatever they don't know, I haven't thought that yet. As far as multiple listing, I am owner of a real estate office and designated managing broker. I have 85 agents working for me. So for me to tell me that you got it from multiple listing, which we call it MLS, when this project goes up, when it's done, then you do appraisal. You don't do it now. Got to bring half, 50% of the price of your houses down. I guarantee you. Okay, and you bring a professional to do that, at appraisal, not anybody that you know. That's all I have to say. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Same row. Residents of Arlington Heights. Come on, join us up here, please.
Thank you. I'm not a public speaker, but here we go. I'm Terry Leach. I live at 1528 South Douglas. It's about two blocks from the proposed area. We bought our home in 2021 after doing our due diligence and felt we bought in a safe, secure neighborhood for our retirement. We attended the Full Circle Neighborhood Meeting and witnessed firsthand what we would consider a highly manipulative business organization. Sure, they accepted questions, but only those that were written out prior to presentation, and then rephrased them to suit us, or to suit themselves, saying that they could answer more questions that way. We ask you, how many times have you had a question answered which generated, or had listened to the response and had another question generated from that response? None of those things were addressed. And when they did answer questions, at times they contradicted themselves. Now, as neighbors, what were we to believe? They chose a location to host the meeting that they knew would have a limited timeframe, that they could actually meet with us. If Full Circle intends on being the good neighbor that they say that they want to be, then why are we lacking in transparency with them? The meeting was not held in the good faith that you intended it to be for us. I immediately started thinking about the German philosopher Friedrich Nietzsche. He said, "The truth doesn't mind being questioned, but a lie doesn't like being challenged." I urge you tonight to think about that as you review everything you've heard. For instance, as they talked about veterans and the disabled, and who would be eligible to move in. From that evening meeting, they talked about the tenant selection plan, which is approved by our funders, including the Illinois Housing Development Authority and the Housing Authority of Cook County, that outlines disability as a requirement for tenancy, and veterans will have a preference, meaning they will move to the top of the waitlist. If that is true, why do they have such a low occupancy rate of veterans and those disabled? Thank you. Please vote no.
Thank you. Anyone else from Arlington Heights in the same row that would like to speak? Okay, we're going to move to the next row behind.
Good evening.
Good evening.
My name is Anna Schmitz, S-C-H-M-I-T-Z, and I live 1,500 feet from the proposed project. When we moved to our home 38 years ago, I think I got everybody beat for the most part, at the corner where the gastroenterologist's office is, used to be La Gandola Restaurant. We knew that when we moved in. And you know what? We were sort of surprised the first time we heard a helicopter land behind it, dropping off clients for the restaurant. And where Dr. Kekos's office is, there was an abandoned gas station there for the longest time. You know, we couldn't do anything about it. Eventually, Dr. Kekos built the facility there. And where Brett Court and Ryan Court are, at White Oak and Arlington Heights Road, that was originally planned and proposed site of 45 townhomes. We decided, as a neighborhood at that time, to fight it, because it did not fit into our neighborhood, our single-family home resident. So what did they do? They built up two streets and some of the other way, you know, toward the park. And they built up wonderful, single-family homes, which have probably brought in quite a bit of tax money to the village. Why they can't extend, and where the proposed project is, there were three single-family homes there too, where, if most of you people remember, there was the ice sculpture gentleman, Mr. Volz. Now, what they did at Brett and Ryan Court, they brought the Now, what they did at Brett and Ryan Court, they brought the people in or the street in off of, uh, down White Oak, off of Arlington Heights Road, and built Brett and Ryan Court, which are dead end, you know, basically cul-de-sacs. Why this property had to be rezoned to even office or now to institutional, when you could have easily gotten a developer to build homes coming in off of Emerson, bringing, putting a fence up just like you have over at Ryan and Brett Court. So, that's all I've got to say, but please take all this into consideration. We've been here a long time. So, been in the whole village for 48 years, so.
Well, thank you. Anybody else in Mrs. Schmitz's row that would like to speak? Next row down? Yes, sir.
Yeah, hello. My name's Dave Dupree, 490 East Haven, so I'm about two blocks, two and a half blocks from the proposed development. Been there about 35-plus years.
Spell your name, please.
D-U-P-R-E-E.
Thank you.
Um, two questions. One is, what happens when the Cook County dollars run out? What happens? Who funds this place? Who pays the rent? We know Cook County doesn't have unlimited money for even 30-plus years or perpetuity. Who's gonna pay subsidized the rent? But mainly, my big question is zoning. After the Eastman fiasco, which I'm sure you're all aware of, the mayor made a big point. He said, "Hey, we have to look at all the zoning next to residential to make sure we don't have a fiasco like this again. We should have transitional zoning so that only small things can be built next to residential." Well, guess what we have here? Transitional zoning. And what, what are they wanting us to do? Throw it away to build something big. Well, it kind of destroys the whole idea of having traditional, transitional zoning, is to provide that small continuity to big commercial, that you can't put a big commercial next to residential. So we have transitional zoning. And if you give the exemption now, how can anyone in the village ever trust the village board or planning commission if they live next to transitional zoning? That another exemption won't be given. Again, even if there's a good reason, your hearts are in the right place, the zoning doesn't allow it. And this planning, you have a plan for the Arlington Heights Road corridor, you've zoned for it, you planned for it. When we moved in there, we knew what the zoning was, the current tenants there, our font, you know, the gastro, the memory care, the dentist, hey, that's fine. Everyone's, no problem with those places. But again, how can anyone trust the village if we give zoning exemptions because we think, hey, it's nice people, they're doing good, let's just give a zoning exemption, right? So, again, that's my, thank you.
Thank you, sir. Same row, any villagers like to speak? There we go. Good evening.
My name is Phyllis Gioli, G-I-O-L-L-I. Aesthetically, I don't believe that it belongs there. It is zoned for a one-story office building. That's what I bought it for. I've been there for 22 years when I purchased it. I asked them what will be here, one zone. I've never protested anything that's been built there. Everything looks wonderful, but this does not match the home levels, the bricking, the roofline, the cedar, whatever it's going to be, it doesn't look right. It, I, everything, how come all the office buildings and dental and memory care was one-story and we're allowing a three-story building in a residential area? And everything else was said, I'm standing behind. Thank you.
Thank you. Same row, anybody else like to speak? All right, we'll move to the next row. Anyone from Arlington Heights like to speak? Yes, ma'am.
Hello, good evening. My name is Dazy Dryankova, D-R-Y-A-N-K-O-V-A. I live 200 feet away from the proposed site, to the south of the site. I've been living in Arlington Heights for the last 22 years and at my current address, I have lived for 11 years. We chose to live there because it's a very rural and quiet place. We do not have sidewalks there. We also have another, um, another place that it's about a block away from us, that is subsidized buildings. So it's not like we do not like subsidized buildings. It's like literally two, like two blocks away from us. So, all of a sudden, this three-story building needs to come and it just doesn't, it's like a sore thumb, it doesn't look fine with all the houses over there. Also, I was on vacation two weeks ago and my house alarm went off. The security company said that they called the police within 30 seconds. My camera showed the police 17 minutes later in front of our house, which means the police didn't really have the capacity to come to my property within 17 minutes. We could have been killed within those 17 minutes. And with those many people to come, how is the police to support so many people? So, with people, with being rural and no having, and not having any sidewalks, it's so hard to drive. We drive 10 miles per hour trying to not hit people around and people will come and start walking the streets and it, it's just gonna be wild. I don't, I don't know how we're gonna do it. Also, the site proposes the entrance to be from Arlington Heights, which I guess is a little bit better, but can you imagine the traffic from Arlington Heights? We can barely make it home as it is. At 4:00, 5:00 PM in the morning, when I drive my kids to school, it's just, also, Forest View Elementary that this site will belong to has not even a single open spot. I have a first grader that cannot go to that school this year. So he has to go to private school because the school doesn't have any openings. We pay 20, $22,000 in taxes, so my child cannot go to public school. I mean, it's, it's, it's a little bit ridiculous. And where would the kids from this side go? Where? The school does not, it's like at capacity. So, this is pretty much what I have. I am not against, of course, people with disabilities, mental disabilities, this time, I have mental disabilities as well. So, um, I mean, Arlington Heights is a huge city. You want to tell me that we cannot build this anywhere else in Arlington Heights?
Ms. Up, thank you.
Thank you.
Appreciate your comments. Anyone else in the same row, Arlington Heights residents? If not, I guess we'll move, yeah, we've got some folks standing in the back and then I guess, Sam, I would say if we have people in other locations, I don't know if they're gonna make their way up this way if they want to speak, I guess they could line up back there so we know they were available to keep things moving. Yes, ma'am, sorry, thank you.
Kim Lawson, L-A-W-S-O-N. I'm a 30-year resident at 304 South Mitchell. I'm also an attorney that has practiced in the area of affordable housing for 35 to 40 years and Full Circle, I'm very proud to say, is a client of ours. One of the things that I wanted to talk briefly about is some of the questions that were raised about financing and why a two-story building wouldn't work. And there were some references to it that it's just, that they're not willing to take on the cost of that. And that's not the way these projects are structured financially. The money from these projects comes from federal and state financing and it comes from the sale of tax credits to equity investors in the deal. And sometimes the developer themselves leave money in the deal. The only money that they really get out of these deals is a development fee. And if there isn't sufficient cash in the deal to pay for the construction costs, they leave a portion of that in. And the only way they get it out is if there's cash flow from the deal as it moves forward, which often is not the case with these projects. In addition to that, Full Circle is one of the only developers in the state of Illinois that has an ongoing program, programmatic initiative of taking part of the development fee that they receive and putting it back into resources for services to the residents at the community. So when you talk about a developer, it's not the typical developer that you think of in a commercial sense. They're in this for the long haul. They're not just a developer, they're a social service provider that's monitored heavily by the state and by the federal government. Full Circle is one of the organizations that has been called upon by the state of Illinois to step into failing, um, low-income properties, to take them over in order to bring them, bring safety back to them, to bring financial stability back to them. They have been a partner of the state, a partner of many municipalities. So I think the sort of notion that this is all greed and, you know, that there are these unlimited resources for these projects is absolutely not true. The state and the federal government are going to look at, what is the cost per unit for the development? And if you have to add another million dollars to reduce the, the number of floors to this development, it will make it financially infeasible in the eyes of the state and HUD. So, that's what they're, that's what they're trying to balance in terms of creating a project that both meets the needs of the community, but also the needs of the people that are financing this, which is in essence, all of us. Thank you.
Thank you. All right. In the back, standing, anybody from Arlington Heights like to speak?
My name is Carol Stubing, S-T-U-B-I-N-G. I came here tonight with no intention of speaking.
I'm, I'm sorry, can you just, where you're residing generally?
I live down the block on Emerson, so, within a block of this. And I would like to say that the only reason I even knew about this tonight was because I just happened by chance to open up some mail that came about two weeks ago. So when they want to say that they have told neighbors, they may have told one side of the neighborhood, but they haven't told all of the neighborhood. So this is all very new to me. I am definitely not for it. We've just done work on our house and to try to get permits was ridiculous. So the zoning should definitely not be changed because somebody wants to come in and build against what the zoning is. Every time we tried to get permits, it literally went to the deadline for approval. Then it was sent back, make changes, this, that, everything else. We did it according to the current zone. I'm also not hearing anything about any kind of medical personnel that's gonna be here. There's disabilities, there's mental disabilities, there's alcoholism, there's, all of this is what I am understanding, this is supposed to be housing? It should be 95 to 97%, not 22. I'm sorry. I'm not saying that there is not a need for this somewhere. It's not here. Thank you.
Thank you. Before we go to the next person, Sam, could you just really quickly speak about the notice requirements and what was sent and why maybe some people might have gotten notice and some not?
Yeah, so the state requires that everyone within 250 feet of the property, exclusive of any right-of-way, receive a notice of the public hearing that has to be sent out no less than 15 days prior to this date. And the petitioner did meet that obligation. In fact, they went beyond that obligation. In some instances, they went, you know, up to 750 feet or more, just to get the word out. Additionally, we've had a website up, on our website to, you know, keep residents informed, you know, a sign up that they can sign into to receive emails when a public hearing has been scheduled and so forth. But, you know, I'd be more of a question for the post office as far as why it took so long for that mail to arrive.
Okay, thank you. And standing in the back, any other residents from Arlington Heights like to speak on this?
Hi, my name is Janice Ferris. That's P-A-S-A-P-A-L-A-H-A-R-E-S. I live in Scarsdale, so I am probably 11 blocks, I think, from the site north and then, you know, I'm south of here. So, um, we moved here in 2007, bought a house. What I loved is that everything is different. It's not cookie cutter. So there's larger homes, there's ours, there's smaller, there's apartment buildings, there's gas stations close by. I can walk to everywhere. The train goes rumbling by. I hear the police cars and the, you know, because I'm close enough to all of that. There's neighbors. We can see into everybody's yards because that's a community. There's dogs, there's parties, there's music, there's all kinds of stuff. I just, I just don't understand why this is a big deal. You're talking about safety. We moved here in 2007. Soon after that, there was a human torso found in a dumpster by the Eros Restaurant. The head, the feet, the arms hacked off and this body jumped in here. And I thought, wow, that's just really disturbing and probably a low point as far as crime. We've never had that again, okay? And I think that's kind of a baseline that we could all kind of say, it's never been that bad, thankfully. But still, no one was running around thinking, oh my God, I'm gonna be the next person in that dumpster with my, you know, everything cut off. I am just, I find it abhorrent that people think that someone in a wheelchair is gonna bring down their property value. I'm just really ashamed of that and, uh, yeah, I'm just having a hard time with this thing.
Can we have some order, please, while the speaker is speaking, please? Let's keep the chatter down. Thank you.
So I, I, I don't think it's someone's take on an apartment building. I think there's more issues at here and I think it's kind of ugly, so, thank you.
Thank you for your comment. Standing in the back, any more residents of Arlington Heights like to speak? Good evening.
Hello, members of the Plan Commission. I am Daniel Crusius, D-A-N-I-E-L-C-R-U-S-I-U-S. I live on Patton Avenue in Arlington Heights and I, I am a lifelong resident here. And I'm also proud to be a person with a disability and, well, and, and so, Arlington Heights, what we stand for is, we stand for inclusion, we stand for welcoming people, we stand for taking care of people and, um, and loving our neighbors around us. And this, this project is an important manifestation of our values and serving people with disabilities and veterans, many, some who are, some who may be injured from war or, or maybe not. But, um, this is who we are as Arlington Heights. This is about our reputation. It is about what makes Arlington Heights a good place to be, which is because we do take care of our, with, do take care of people with disabilities. That's why our schools are a good place because we have great special education programs. That is, inclusion is what makes Arlington Heights a good place. And I'm proud to be a resident of Arlington Heights and I hope that this can be a welcoming community and approving this project will be a sign of welcome to people with disabilities. And thank you.
Thank you very much. In the back of the room, Arlington Heights residents. Good evening.
Uh, good evening. My name is Christina Crusius. Christina, C-H-R-I-S-T-I-N-A. Crusius spelled C-R-U-S-I-U-S. I live at 204 North Patton and I have for all 30 years of my life. I am in support of this project, along with members of my family and many I know from my faith community, First United Methodist Church of Arlington Heights. I think this project is well-thought-out and much-needed. I'm impressed with the thoroughness of presentations, attention to detail, and response to concerns that have been addressed throughout the course of the project. Also, for the record, I live in a single-family neighborhood, just two blocks from a three-story apartment. It's literally been a non-issue and I've had friends in these apartments growing up. But mostly, it saddens me that the reaction to living near people with disabilities is one of fear, or specifically, not in my backyard. In fact, it disgusts me that the, that the immediate neighbors are alleging that disability is associated with is associated with crime. I'm sorry, what? People with intellectual and developmental disabilities are a vulnerable population. Did you know that this demographic is almost twice as likely to be victims of crimes than people without disabilities? Think about that for a second. Further, I know so many wonderful people with disabilities who have a lot to contribute and would be excellent neighbors. I hope you all would be excellent neighbors to them, too. I work with students with disabilities every day in a school setting. Someday, they will become adults who will need places to live. A place like this could allow them to live in the community relatively independently while still having supports available. The community has been really supportive of Jerry's Cafe, which opened about a year ago. This is a place some of the employees may be eligible to live. I also have a number of people with disabilities in my family and circle of friends. Additionally, I have invisible disabilities myself, including mental health-related. To all of you in the room, please be more considerate and talk like we're actually in the room. We're not scary people, I promise. I'd also challenge you to consider that people with disabilities are already in your neighborhoods. 13 percent of people in the United States have a disability. They are already living peacefully in your neighborhood and in mine. For example, a home a block away from me became a Clearbrook home when I was growing up. They've been nothing but good neighbors and we've never had a problem. I know everyone wants to believe that they support people with disabilities, but does that mean anything if concrete actions are not taken to support the disability community? Now is the time, here is the place, let's take advantage of this opportunity in front of us. I'm excited about the possibilities and I hope you will vote yes. Thank you.
Thank you. In the back of the room, anyone else from Arlington Heights like to speak? Is there anyone else? I think we've got our location, we have a gentleman coming in here. Yes, sir, if you could state your name and where you reside?
Hello, my name is Cole Interline, I live at 121 East Council Trail. I would be about 250 feet away from this location. And just to comment on, you know, the last speaker, I have no problem with anybody with disabilities, I don't fear the people with disabilities. My concern is, when I moved to Arlington Heights, so I bought my, I bought the property eight years ago, then spent the next two years planning, and, well, my whole, me and my wife, we aspired to move to Arlington Heights. Became a reality when we bought our property. I then worked to build our home, and then we started creating, building our family. I now have four small children. And as some of the other neighbors, I did do my due diligence, looked at the zoning, looked at the properties that were around, tried to understand what the neighborhood could be in the future, because we, with living so close to the International Plaza, we knew things were going to change. I'm all for growth, I'm all for development. We were excited, because we're like, hey, this is going to be a great, single-family neighborhood, there are some businesses, off, you know, office buildings, medical doctors, commercial real estate, all one-story. I was like, this is just going to grow, develop, our property values will increase, and I think this is going to be a great place to raise our family. Ultimately, here we are today, the zoning is going to change, our single-family neighborhood is changing, we're now going to have a three-story building 250 feet away from our property. Targets that the gentleman here was speaking to, you know, they have targets of hitting 25 percent, 35 percent, I don't know all the numbers, people who are veterans, who are disabled, that's less than 50 percent of the people in that home. Arlington Heights also, so just, this is just this one building, so it's 25 units, affordable, 250 feet away, I will see it from my front porch. Directly behind me at the International Plaza, we opened the door to this three-story building, next thing that's coming, seven four-story buildings 50 feet away from my home, including an entire affordable building. That developer doesn't even want to have mixed, have the affordable units mixed in with their other six buildings, they want to build their sixth and then outsource the seventh. That's going to significantly change my life, my family's life, and the whole look and feel of our entire neighborhood. Had I known that, I would not have invested my entire life savings and years building my home for me and my family. So I lose sleep at night just thinking about the destruction that's going to happen to the, to the woods, the trees, my property value, and everything I've spent my life building. So I urge you to please vote no. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Continuing in the back of the room, anyone else from Arlington Heights like to speak up on this? I do not see anyone else. I would say if there's anybody else in the other rooms to make your way up here, because we're, we're going to come back to non-Arlington Heights residents on this side of the room? Yes, ma'am, come up.
Good evening. My name's Mary Malzinski, M-A-L-Z-E-N-S-K-I. I live across in the Surrey Ridge subdivision and I'm against this, this location. Just a couple blocks south of here, there's a large construction project underway for Vietnam veterans and the disabled. I don't understand why another building, why this project is, is so close to that. Okay, it's on Arlington Heights Road, just south of Gulf. And I'm concerned about safety. I've lived in Arlington Heights for 45 years and I used to work for the Illinois Department of Mental Health in the city in Dunning. The business office was across the street, residents were across from there. I used to do the night reports for the doctors of the residents escaping for drugs and then breaking back in. There's a big drug problem as it is in Illinois and I'm just concerned for my safety. And I don't understand this location, you saw the map, it's right across the street from homes and homes in the back of it. Thank you for, for your time.
Thank you. And point of clarification, you are, I guess, a resident of Arlington Heights, I missed that. So anybody else in the room that has not spoken? And are we clear of other rooms? Sam, is there anybody coming up? Are we ready to close the public hearing?
Well, I may suggest a, like a short recess before we close public hearing, just to check, you know, the other rooms. We can maybe take a quick break for five minutes.
All right. We'll, we'll continue the public hearing, the public hearing is not closed at this point.
Correct.
We will keep the public hearing open, we're going to take a brief, let's call it five-minute recess. Sam can check the other rooms and we will reconvene here in approximately five minutes.
me in another room, please make your way to the boardroom on the third floor. We will be reconvening shortly.
Again, if anybody is in another room, please make your way up and get in line as we begin to wrap up comments. We will shortly get started. Is there a motion to reconvene the public hearing?
I'll make that motion.
I'll second.
All right. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? The public hearing goes on. Anyone who did not previously speak, would you like to step up? Sure. Yeah, come on. Hi.
Hi. I am not a resident of Arlington Heights, I am very highly connected to Arlington Heights and-
Could you state your name?
My name is Linda Waycie, Linda and then Waycie, W-A-Y-C-I-E.
Thank you.
I attend Southminster Presbyterian Church. So what I really would like to mention here is that a yes vote is 25 chances for veterans to find an affordable housing. And I do want to quote James Dowling, hospital director of Edward Hines VA Hospital, who said in his support letter, and I quote, "The community needs affordable housing for veterans who are exiting programs such as VA grant and per diem, per diem only, and transition in place and other programs. With Grace Terrace being designed for persons with disabilities and onsite service staff who will work with residents, Grace Terrace will be a great housing option for veterans in Arlington Heights and Cook County," unquote. And as commissioners, you need to decide if you are for or against a facility that has a preference, that it doesn't mean it's going to be 100 percent veterans, but there will be a preference for disabled veterans. So I hope that you will vote yes for Grace Terrace. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else in the room like to make a comment? Yes, sir. Sure, come on up.
My name is Matthew Pieczonka, P-I-E-C-Z-O-N-K-A. I live about three blocks away from the proposed site. The first topic I'm going to bring up was before we spoke about Glass Door and Indeed from the employers- and Indeed from the employers of Full Circle. Some of the comments that these employees themselves made as a review are, and I quote, "Poor leadership, unrealistic expectation." And then another review, "Horrible, bad leadership, toxic, bad." Another one, "Horrible leadership. I see why three to four different employees and managers left in a span of two to four weeks of employment, just in the small amount of timeouts there." And those are just a few examples of their own employees that they stated. And the next topic I wanted to talk about was, we talked a lot about property values, and a lot that has been said was hearsay, but we have a lot of people here, and people could even say, "Who here would want to live next to a site like this?" Would it raise a show?
We're not taking a referendum here, guys. Go ahead, continue with your public comments. Excuse me, Mike, Michael, is the clock stuck?
It's on.
All right.
That was going to be my last kind of show, that over probably three-fourths of people here would not want to live next to a site like this, causing the property value to go down. Common sense. Thank you.
Thank you. Yes, sir, in the back, stepping up. Yes, sir, come on up.
Hi, Rich Stubing, 215 West Emerson, last name S T U B I N G. I just had one, I had a question and a comment. Question is, there've been a lot of numbers thrown about, about the percentage of residents with disabilities. I just wanted some clarification on that. If it's anything less than 100%, I think a lot of their arguments are out the window. If it's not 100%, either veteran or somebody with disability, their arguments are out the window. My comment is, you already have a 300-plus unit building approved and soon to be under construction at Arlington Heights and Algonquin. Couldn't they find 25 units there for the same residents, future residents? I think it would be a much more convenient location for them. There'd be onsite resources for them to use, like restaurants and other facilities. Those are my comments. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Anyone else in the room who has not spoken? Yes, sir.
My name is Fred Leach. I live at 1528 South Douglas, about two blocks or so from the proposed facility. And I've listened to all of the comments, and I agree with all the people that are saying, no, they don't want this facility. It's not that, there's not the need, but it just doesn't make sense in this location. From the zoning and the look of the whole neighborhood, it just doesn't fit in. But my, I want to talk about something else. My career I've spent in business, owned my own business, run businesses for other people, did a lot of consulting, and something just doesn't make sense. If you're going to buy a piece of property that you're going to spend a lot of money on, now you need to have all these changes and zoning changes and change the way you originally had it set up to make the neighbors happy, or not happy, but to alleviate some of their concerns. That just doesn't make sense to me. If I was going to do that, any of the businesses I was running or my consultants, I'd say, "Make a conditional offer on the property, then go through all this other stuff before you put any of your money into it, or government money, which is all our money, and buy the property." They did it all the, to me, they did it backwards. And now we're asking the village of Arlington Heights to bail them out so they can do something with this piece of property that they own. And if that's the way they're going to go forward or operating before they even put a shovel in the ground to build this thing, that really makes me question how they're going to be running their business. Because to me, any business sense says, this is just done backwards. And I know a number, a lot of the other residents had a number of other questions and requests from Full Circle that they still haven't gotten answers to. And got a sheet right here that some of the people have given me. So I, to me, this just doesn't make sense. We're trying to help a Full Circle, Full Circle out because they did things backwards. And I don't think the village of Arlington Heights should bail somebody out in this position. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Anyone else over here that would like to, yes, ma'am?
Hi, my name is Maryann Ogilvie. It's M A R Y A N N O G I L V I E. I live in Schaumburg. And I'm going to recommend that you vote yes on this proposal. I have worked in Arlington Heights 25 years, so I'm not a stranger to Arlington Heights. But I do have a 26-year-old son who has both mental illness and developmental disability. And my husband and I are in our 70s. And for the last many, many years, we have said to ourselves, what's going to happen to him when we can't take care of him any longer? And we've looked and looked and looked, and places are full, and the places that are available either have very long waiting lists, the places aren't cared for well. And these are some, some agencies have places that are great, some not so great, but it's, at any rate, there's no opening. And I run into many, many parents, and when I, we ask them, "So what's your plan?" And everybody knows that is the question. What is your plan for your kid when you can no longer take care of them? And most of the parents look at us and say, "We don't know yet." Or, "He's going to live with us forever." Or, "I'm hoping I will just live one more day than he does." And that's the truth. People really do believe that. We were very fortunate, and then we found a place for developmental disabilities. It's a wonderful six-story building in Aurora, and he is thriving. Without parents there to rescue him or do things he really doesn't need as an adult, he's able to, with the staff help that's there, he is able to grow and mature, and he's working, and he's got friends, and it's all without us. But that's great, because that is going to be what happens down the road. So I would say for the folks that need a setting like permanent supportive housing, where there are services available if they need it, where they can walk to places, they can walk to work, they can bike to, bike to the store, they can have friends outside of their own home. I think that's absolutely wonderful. And I am really surprised when I hear some folks say that, "The NIMBY's not in my backyard. You know, it's a great idea, I just don't want it near me." I really never thought any town in the northwest suburbs was so homogeneous in their thinking. I mean, look around in the room. We are, we are all different. Well, having a mental illness or substance abuse or a developmental disability or PTSD from being in a war, that's different too. We all need a place to go. So let's let people go where they can thrive. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else on this side that has not spoken yet? Yes, ma'am?
Hi, thank you for letting me be here. My name is Suzie Piaszeki, P I A S E C K I, and I'd like to bawl. So, yeah, I'm nervous being up here.
Just give us some indication of where you reside.
Oh, I'm so sorry, Mount Prospect. I live in permanent supportive housing in Mount Prospect. And so, yeah, I feel like I have a lot that can be shared regarding that. I love being in permanent supportive housing. It's really helped change my life. Nervous being up here.
It's okay, you're doing good.
Thank you. Yeah, so I'm a Korean-American adoptee. I live with depression, anxiety, and PTSD. And I am 44, my shoe size is eight, my eighth grade locker combination is 81522. And basically, you know, I was discouraged when I heard that Mr. DeVito said, "Are we a product or a burden?" And really, as people with mental illness were people first, you know, I really was very discouraged to hear that. The only real disability in life that exists is not to have a heart and to not have compassion or kindness for others and for humanity. And the real problem is discrimination against people with disabilities and not seeing them as people first. You know, I think disabilities don't discriminate. All walks of life are at risk. And, you know, so who's to say it's not going to be you one day? You know, it could end up being someone you love. So people want to know what you are so they know how to hate you. Unfortunately, that's the way it is in this world sometimes, but labels belong on jars, not on people. And like Brian and Martin had pointed out, you know, in regard to crime and violence, year after year after year, for I don't even know how many years, research has shown people with disabilities are more likely to be the victims of crime and violence rather than the perpetrators. That is a fact. So no matter what has been brought up to your attention, national research shows people with disabilities are more likely to be the victims of violence and crime than the perpetrators. And as far as, oh, I only have a minute left. Okay, so there actually was a point with my depression that I had attempted suicide. That was in 2002. So being so bold as to share that, years later, fast forward to now, actually, in 2016, I ended up receiving permanent supportive housing. And I look forward every day to being able to live in my apartment, to look forward to waking up in the morning and taking care of my place, having a place that I can call home, and take pride in it. I actually look forward to paying my rent. Call me crazy, right? Yeah, well, you know what, I look forward to being able to say with pride, I can pay all my bills and I am self-sustained. I may not have a lot of money at the end of the month left over, but I can pay my bills. I'm proud of being able to take care of myself and be independent. And it's only thanks to permanent supportive housing that I can do that and live independently. So thank you.
Thank you. Anyone on this side of the room that has not yet spoken that would like to speak? All right, seeing, I'm sorry, are we, oh, there you are. Come on in.
Hi.
Hi.
Good evening. I'm George Mato. Been a 48-year resident of Arlington Heights. I'm a retired physician. I am chairperson of the Arlington Heights Age Friendly Community Initiative, and Arlington Heights is an age-friendly community. On all of our surveys in Arlington Heights, in the area, affordable housing is the number-one concern. As far as people with disabilities, as a physician, I can guarantee you that each and every one of us at one time of our life, I'm 82 years old, I'm soon going to be disabled. Okay? We cannot ignore this. And we can't keep passing the buck down the road. Now, I've enjoyed the conversation tonight. As I've been sitting there, I've been trying to think of, how can we solve this problem? It's there. People with disabilities are not going to go away. People who need help are not going to go away. A place to live is the most important thing in a person's life. Now, how this is resolved, I don't know. It's up to you. I don't have the answers. But I'm saying this adversarial position, this tit-for-tat, this stuff, you know, crime statistics. I mean, I live in Scarsdale. The house is five, 10, 15 feet away. I had to put frost on my windows in my bedroom because, you know, so my neighbor couldn't look in. I mean, I know it's not equal to what everybody's saying tonight, but all I can say is, affordable housing for Arlington Heights, for the area, for the nation, is a number-one problem. And we have to start somewhere to make some inroads in this. It's going to have to be a give and take, because I can guarantee you that every one of us, at some time in our life, is going to be disabled. And I just hope to goodness that when that happens, somebody's there for me and somebody's there for you. So we've got to stop this. We have to look objectively, not so emotionally. "Oh, my house is going to worth $900,000." Well, it's only going to be worth $850,000. You know, I mean, this, you know, who can answer these questions? That's all I'm saying. We have a huge affordable housing crisis problem. You guys are in a position to perhaps start doing something about it. We have to start the conversation-
Thank you, sir.
-rationally. Thank you very much.
Appreciate your comments. Thank you. Anyone else back over there in the ancillary room that I'm not seeing that wants to make a comment? Michael, you see anybody over there? All right. And seeing nobody else, we're going to, oh, oh, I'm sorry, sir, go ahead. Right in front of me, and I missed him.
My name is Jim Greer, 6 West Emerson, a few houses away from the new project. Just want to bring up a couple of facts to consider. One is the timing. Is this the appropriate timing? Has enough planning been done? Or are we just doing something because a situation arose and, you know, it's good for a project? Please consider the folks that have invested in the area, invested in the area as a residential community, and would like to see that, and at the same time, would like to be a part of the planning for the area. There's a lot going on, on the south side in that area right now. Is now the time to be making such a change like this? So that if it is a good thing, to make sure that it works, and that it works with all the other things that are changing. Please consider the fact that people came into this community, it was a residential community, the zoning laws have changed gradually, there's a lot of creep going on. One zone gets changed to another, then something else happens, and there's a lot of creeping going on. That scares me. Please vote no for this project at this time. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. All right. Any other speakers that have not spoken before we close the public hearing? All right, seeing no hands, we will, do we have a motion to, we'll just close the public hearing, I guess? We can do that without a motion. All right. We're going to close the public hearing, and we'll move to the next, the next event for tonight, which is discussion among the plan commissioners. And there may be questions of the petitioner from the plan commissioner. So, Mr. Jensen, you want to start us out?
Well, I just want to ask staff some questions. It seems to me about three years ago, we had a group come before us, Shelter Inc. in Ivy Hill. And we heard about several hours of the same kind of comments about crime, drugs, gangs, and so forth. Have we had, that was approved by the board. The board approved that unanimously, even though it didn't get that kind of recommendation, I think, coming out of the plan commission. What kind of problems have we had with drugs, gangs, illicit activity? People were very worried. It was near a school. They were worried that these young men who were transitioning from being 17 or 18 into adulthood, trying to find a job, would attack the schoolchildren. Have we had any problems from that, from that particular project?
I can't speak to all of the issues you alluded to. I can state that anecdotally, they had quite a few calls for service on their location on Gulf Road when they relocated to the facility on Valley Lane. Over the last, I think, year and a half since they've been open, they've had, you know, a significant drop in the number of calls for service.
Good, thank you.
Excuse me, public hearing is closed, my friend.
No, you cannot.
No.
No.
I think the other thing is, we've had a lot of references early on to some data from FOIA, Freedom of Information Act. And I don't know whether that's, I don't know what that is that they're suggesting. So I would hope that staff would work with the residents, and if, put it in the form of some kind of data before it goes to the board. If it's anecdotal, a bunch of written reports of individual cases, I don't consider that data. If it's actual numbers that can be put in some aggregate form and so forth, I think it ought to go before the board. So I don't know what the quality of this FOIA data is, but it was a topic of discussion. And I'd ask, I would ask staff to take a good look at that. I think the board ought to have access to whatever that information is. That's all I've got. Thank you, Lynn. Joe?
Sam, has there been any other interest in this property recently?
Recently, I mean, no.
Recently, I mean, no. I mean, over the last, you know, five or so years, I know we were approached by a car wash that wanted to locate there. In 2016, there had been a medical office approved there. It did not move forward. They they lost their tenant and they could not build. It is zoned OT, Office Transitional Zoning District. The office market is, you know, very weak, especially post-COVID, which I think is one of the reasons the staff development committee is, you know, open to a discussion on a change and potential use there.
Thank you for that. Just a comment, observation from the last couple hours. Coming into tonight's meeting, I thought the issue was a three-story building, but I don't think that's the issue. I don't think it's a three-story, four-story, two-story, one-story building. The issue is having disabled people living there.
Uh, excuse me. Order.
That's my observation. And I've had a dear sister, I trust more than anybody in my life, she had some disabilities, but she's probably the most honest, kindest person I know. That's just an observation I'm making. Thank you.
Mr. Bruce?
Sam, I'd like a little more, just information on the corridor plan. Was that a zoning overlay? I can't remember how that went down.
No, I mean, technically, it was kind of like a appendix to the comprehensive plan. So it was just, it wasn't an official zoning overlay. It was a guideline for redevelopment of this, you know, particular property among others within the South Arlington Heights corridor.
And that's where the two-story
That had a, yeah.
Was a limit on the two-story. I remember that.
Yeah, they had a recommendation for a two-story structure, yes.
Okay. And and just unlike my fellow commissioner here, I think just the opposite. For me, this is a zoning issue and a three-story building issue. I don't have the same feeling that Joe has, not that he's right or wrong, but I just don't agree with that at all.
Thank you, Bruce. Sue?
Um, so, to me, the questions that I have are specifically related to the two-story, three-story, and the transition. Our direction, it appears, from the village board, was that the petitioner should demonstrate with specificity why a two-story concept is not feasible. There wasn't any direction from village board that it seemed to object to the three-story. They were simply talking about feasibility. Am I misinterpreting this statement?
The condition of approval that the staff development committee is recommending is that the petitioner provide additional depth into why the two-story alternative was not feasible. The direction from the village board was that the petitioner and staff examine the possibility of a two-story building.
Okay. And in terms of, we talked about a little bit vacancy of this property. I mean, I'm very familiar with this property. I appreciate all the residents and speaking how long they've lived here. For the record, I've lived here longer than anyone else, as mentioned. So I'm very, very familiar, considering I went to Holmes Junior High in Juliet Low and grew up in that area, with this piece of property. So it's been vacant for a significant period of time, correct?
It has been, yes.
And there has been no viable projects to date for this property?
Correct, yes, it is still vacant.
Okay. And I'm just speaking, after years and years and years of experience on this board, it's not uncommon when there's vacant property to consider making adjustments to zoning or or height limitations, if it's appropriate to the property. So I'm not asking you to answer that, Sam. I'm just making that statement because we've seen many, many, many projects come through here. So, again, I fully respect Commissioner Green's commentary specific to himself, but I have to agree with my previous two commissioners that the very, I said at the outset, I wanted to hear why this property itself was a bad situation, not why we're guessing and presuming that the residents of the property would be bad. And yet, over and over and over and over again, with the very, very few exception, all I heard was crime danger, crime danger, crime danger. I also have to state, because I'd like this to be on the record, that when the residents and the other residents in other facilities and when individuals that I have to say so bravely stood up here and spoke to their own disability and experience, which is extremely difficult, given the the room, I saw laughing, rolling eyes, smirking. I saw specifically people that would not listen and would look at their laptop or or other devices whenever anyone was speaking. There's no willingness to at least hear and respect and understand. You don't do agree, but let's give people some courtesy and respect. That was very disturbing to me. Contrary to that, I watched the yes people when there were no people speaking, and I didn't see rolling eyes and laughing. To me, that lends to me what has been previously stated, which is this is a not-in-my-backyard situation. This is really a concern over the residents of this community, not whether or not this is an appropriate fit. To me, going two-story versus three-story, I said at the beginning, a two-story, let's say they can go get the funding, now they're gonna come back with two-story. What is that doing to that piece of property? We're reducing green space? We're adding additional, like, sightline issues? And to me, that is a much more problematic situation. If, I I do still respect that this is not a three-story area. So I have reservations with respect to what the community looks like with respect to two and three-story. But again, like Commissioner Lorenzini said, I have a family member who is a disabled adult, who finally now is able to move into disabled housing, who has a significant mental illness and lived in my aunt and uncle's basement for years and years and years and years. He's a member of our family. I've never once felt unsafe around him, ever. I would, again, agree that he probably feels more unsafe around others than I've ever felt around him. So to hear these, these statements just break my heart as a lifetime resident of this community. So this to me, and I would also like to remind the planning commission who asked about the criminal records, that's an Illinois law issue and a discrimination issue and not something that any one of us are allowed to consider. So let's just remind that. All the questions about criminal background checks, they're restricted by Illinois law, and Illinois law has very, very strict rules about what you can and cannot consider with respect to criminal records, and they consider consideration of criminal records to be discrimination. So that is not in our purview. So to that end, again, I'm still thinking about the two-story, three-story, about the community itself. But any other questions, comments have no bearing in my mind on what our purview is on this commission. The village trustees have a much different purview. They can consider some of these issues. They can. We cannot. So that's all I have to say.
Thank you, Commissioner Dawson. John?
Well, I'll be very honest, I'm very, I'm very torn on this issue because I fully understand the need for affordable housing, for veterans with PTSD, for disabled people and so forth. However, I, I'm not sure this is the right location. You can't impose a facility in an existing residential area that could hurt the rest of that residential area. I'm hearing that people would not have bought their homes in this area if this was there. If they, if this is approved, I could hear people selling their homes and moving out, that's gonna reduce property value. We don't wanna do that. We're a village of good neighbors. So I, I'm just concerned that this is the wrong location for this facility. We need the facility, but this is the wrong location for it. I'm also concerned with what I'm hearing about these FOIA data that reveals the vetting practices of full circle and their management history. That concerns me very much, the fact that they're not gonna have a full-time person on the building, in the building, only nine to five, five days a week. That's less than twenty-five percent of the time of a full week. I mean, that's nothing. So I'm, these are things that I'm torn against, but I'm, I'm leaning that this is not the right location for this facility. That's all I have.
Thank you, sir. Terry?
I agree. This is a tough issue. As I've said at the last plan commission hearing, I appreciate the need. I'm glad that there was reorientation of the building. I thought the way it was laid out before was ill-conceived. I'm wondering, I don't know if staff can comment to this. There was a number thrown out that it would, to make this a two-story building instead of a three-story building, would cost about a million dollars. That's about forty thousand dollars a unit for twenty-five units. I have a background in valuation, and typically, a, a higher building is more expensive to build. You're elevating all these building materials. Now granted, you have more foundation, more roof on, if you spread this out. Were you provided with this estimate of a million dollars? Is this something you guys looked into?
No.
I mean, we didn't have a detailed pro forma, but I think it relates more to the stormwater detention, detention requirements is probably where the added cost mostly comes in, not relative to the actual, you know, structural materials, although that that may make a difference as well. But I'm sure the petitioner could speak more to that than than I could.
Is that something that, do you have a architect here or the person that did this? I just want a management purview.
Yeah, we, we do have an architect here. I will let her speak for a moment. I would just say, from the developer's perspective, it is a mix of the stormwater detention issues that were described earlier, as well as lengthening a building creates that lineal feat of facade, longer roof, longer drain lines, and slab, as you were describing. It also makes it less efficient because you have, you know, a two-story elevator instead of a three-story elevator. So all of that combines, but I'll let the architect speak more directly to any specifics you have.
If you could please state your name.
Therese Thompson, T-H-O-M-P-S-O-N. I'm with Corrigan Clark. And actually, Josh did kind of give you a pretty good rundown on the, the things that contribute to the cost. The storm, stormwater is substantial. The underground pipe detention is substantially more than than the surface detention, but um...
There's no more units. Why wouldn't the detention pond that's already there, why wouldn't that work?
The more surface area of ground we cover, the less pervious we make the...
No, you got it.
Um, the more we need to store the water that isn't gonna be absorbed in the, what is, you know, more pervious grass area.
You can't just make it a little, you can't make it just a little deeper?
Sure you can.
No, depth is not something that we can add on, especially because we are utilizing a high water line and overflow that are established for this area to the right of way. So a lot of those things are already set, and we're trying to abide by those. Like Therese was saying, extending the building, I mean, we're just elongating the whole area. It'll shorten the detention, adds impervious area. There's no way we would be able to get that all above ground storage. So it'd be a, a mix of both, oversized pipe, pavers, it would be a whole additional stormwater system to do that.
Okay, thank you.
Can I just interject? What about adding stormwater detention area to the area northeast of this, you got this long elongated property to the northeast right there?
So the stormwater has to be at the lowest point of the site because that's where it discharges to, that's where it naturally flows. We can't put water uphill. So we can't take the water from downhill and get it uphill and store it there and still overflow it correctly without having some kind of a pump system.
Correct me if I'm wrong, but that existing detention area, isn't that shared with memory care?
Correct.
Then that's, that's north. Isn't that going uphill?
That's to the south.
It's the south.
That's the south. Yeah, but I'm saying, the, the detention area is north of memory care.
Right.
So isn't that going uphill from memory care?
From memory care, not from our building in our site. We have to collect all the stormwater from our site and put it all into the detention basin.
Right.
So that's downhill. So we couldn't put more water to the north of our site because everything is downstream.
Well, can't gravity work?
That is gravity. That, that's why it's on the south.
If you, just because we elongate the building, let's say you put an L shape in the building, I'm an architect. So that, the additional footage that you have of whatever it is, if you're telling me the water runs from the north to the south, why wouldn't it continue around the addition? To continue to run from the north to the south?
So that was not what I was saying. I thought he was referring to putting stormwater on the north, which we cannot do.
No, he would, he didn't know that it was uphill from there.
Yeah, so no, what we would be able to do is we can put more stormwater on the south, which was what we would have to do. It would just have to be underground. That's what we're trying to say, which is...
So you can't dig that any deeper, is what you're telling me?
No.
Why?
Because that pond is connected to the memory care pond
Okay.
which is set at a certain elevation. The bottom of pond and top of pond are set. And those elevations are set on Arlington Heights code on where our overflow is, which is to the east and not to the I dot road. So those elevations are all set in stone. So all we can do is extend the pond and meet Arlington Heights regulations for overflow and berm height and follow those.
But that's just a question of design. You take the building and rotate it up to the, to the north end, it's gonna give you more buildable pond down at the south end. I said, that's a matter of design. I said, you just didn't design it that way. You designed a three-story building, the last meeting we had here, and you're using the same building, correct?
And I, I'm not trying to say we can't provide more stormwater. We can. That just adds to the cost. That's all we were trying to say with the additional stormwater.
But this, it may add to your costs, but what you're asking the, the neighborhood to give up, there's a cost, you know, related to that as well. So if you wanna do business, you should do business at the best level and to make everybody as happy as you can, including the neighbors.
All right, I'm just gonna interject really quickly here. We're coming up upon the time of eleven PM, and in order for us to continue the meeting, I think somebody would have to make a motion.
I would make a motion to extend the meeting by thirty minutes.
Second?
All in favor?
Aye.
All right, public hearing continues. Sorry, that's just a rule. I don't know what catastrophe happens if that doesn't happen, but we've never gotten to the point where we've gone over it, so I have to...
The police show up.
Oh, yeah, the police show up and arrest me.
Without an extension, we haven't, yeah.
I just wanted to clarify for Commissioner Green, those are our third-party consultants and designers for the property, the, the...
Right.
Yeah, I just wanted to...
If you had to put a two-story building there, you could do it.
Uh, I don't believe that that is accurate, in part because, and maybe staff can provide more input. One of the things that has been impressed upon us is the requirement to keep Emerson Street possible to connect through the site for future connection of what is now currently terminating, which precludes us from building anything other than the drive aisle that you see north of our current site location. So i- if that is also back on the table, then we could certainly revisit, but that was not my understanding.
I mean, we could certainly look at alternatives. I don't know how much, you know, you said seventy-four feet of additional building length, and we'd have to see how the stormwater lays out and whether a connection to Emerson Street was physically possible. I mean, I'm sure there's probably ways to lay it out, but again, we haven't made that attempt, so it's hard to say.
Nobody has, so it's a moot point.
No, but it sounds like they're open to it, and it's just been the village direction or miscommunication. So it sounds like you would be open to, if that was off the table.
Right. We are constrained, currently, our understanding is that we are constrained to the north by what could be Emerson, and we are constrained to the south by what is the detention. And we are constrained to the east by what is proximity to our rear yard neighbor. And then we're precluded on the west by Arlington Heights and...
Could move the building further south if you got rid of those raised planters. What's the purpose of the raised planters?
Accessible gardening for our residents, so that they can garden while in wheelchairs.
To go back to my questions, I, like I said, I'm glad you reoriented the building. I really don't wanna see a three-story building in these people's backyard or from across the street, in that area. From what I hear and from what my experience is, that should be a doable thing to make it two-story. It might cost more, but I think we need more transparency. It might cost more, but I think we need more transparency with your neighbors. When they ask questions, I, from what I'm hearing, they weren't given answers to questions they asked. And I think that's an important thing. But there is a need. We've approved a number of affordable housing projects in town in the past. I don't think any of us were opposed to that. We understand there's a need for it, but it's got to be right for the neighborhood. And that's where I stand on it.
Thank you, Terry.
I guess I'll speak. I, I, you know, a couple of things I would say. Oh, yeah, go ahead, you can see right now, I think, you know, there's been a few, a lot of things said and a lot of, you know, concerns. I, I really, I, I really do not like to label the folks that are opposing this as, as people that, that are against people with disabilities. I think that's unfair. I think that they've seen potential externalities around projects like this, whether or not they apply here, and, and they're, you know, coming up with concerns about vetting and crime associated with it. I don't think that disability really is, is, is an issue. I think that what they're concerned about is whether or not Full Circle has done a good job in its other properties. Obviously, there's been testimony and evidence submitted both, both ways, so that's, you know, make that determination. But it's less to me about the user, right? I mean, I think some of the concerns that come from the public too are, the system that this is a part of is very difficult to manage. Full Circle has a minefield of regulations they have to go through. Cook County has tied their hands in a lot of ways, and unfortunately, regardless of who the user is, those issues might arise because of HUD regulations, you know, the limitation on criminal investigations. Well, if someone, you know, if you go back 40 months, that's okay, they can't ask about that. But if you go, you know, 18 months back, you know, up to, up to, I think, three years, they can ask about that, but something terrible might have happened, you know, beyond that, and people are concerned about that. And I don't think that's irrational to be concerned. That's just the apparatus that's in place for delivering these types of projects when you're tying them to the government funding. So, regardless of who the user is, I'm not looking at it from a user perspective. The other issue that came up is affordable. As we opened the meeting, we talked about the affordable, and a lot of folks said, you know, we need more affordable supportive housing, and I think as the record suggests, the state has, I think currently, I saw 44 municipalities on the list of not meeting the state guideline of 10%. We're not one of them. Our neighbors in Mount Prospect, Roy Meadows, Schaumburg, Palatine, Wheeling, Buffalo Grove, I don't think any of them are below the, the target either. We're nearly twice what that is. So, I'm not saying that it's the, it's not an appropriate use, but I think to come in and say Arlington Heights is, is some kind of, you know, aberration here, that we're just, you know, it's, it's the same issue we have every, anywhere. Of course, if you're developing low, you know, we say, well, there's a, there's a demand for it. Well, of course there is. If you're trying to give something away for below market value, who's not going to want to move there? And so, I think there's a lot of advocates, and I saw a lot of recommendation letters from organizations that are claiming that, you know, no matter what, regardless of the land used particular, the location, we need this. And that's not our job. I think our job is to look at the particular site and say, and we have to balance this, and we have to say, okay, the village obviously has a policy of affordable housing. We've passed an ordinance, most municipalities have not. We've taken that action. And I don't think anybody's saying affordable housing is, you know, the issue here. I think there's appropriate places for it. We've already placed it in, in certain areas. And I think a project like this, in my opinion, would probably fit pretty well, even not too far south of this, you know, along Arlington, Arlington Heights Road, that corridor where buildings start to get bigger, and there's more commercial, there's more activity, there's a lot more density going on. And then as we cross essentially Jewel going north, things start to scale down, all the way to essentially downtown Arlington Heights. And, you know, part of our analysis, as we look at these things, is, you know, the comprehensive plan is not like a, a set of handcuffs, right? It's not that we can't move off of a comprehensive plan. We do it from time to time, but there's a lot of thought, there's a lot of planning that goes into that. A lot of, we have a good staff, and the staff puts a lot of time into that. They get public consideration to things like the comp plan, the corridor plan in addition. And, you know, we put a lot of resources into that. If we're just going to throw it out on a whim, I'm not sure why we even do it. And if we're not gonna, if we're going to come in and say, well, we need, we need this project because it's good, well, of course, it's a nice project, and it will help people. We all want to help people, but, you know, we could say that about a lot of projects, and it does, it just can't automatically be a trump card because we like it and throw everything else away. Throw away the planning, throw away the potential reliance, you know, people, you know, if people are looking at this neighborhood and they're saying, okay, we're moving in, not only is the current zoning this, but, you know, the comp plan says this, you know, all those things have to be considered. And, you know, we go through a lot of projects where we amend the comp plan because it's really, you know, nobody objects to it, it makes sense, but there's a reason we do the, the planning process, and there's a lot of resources put into it. And for us to just throw it out, I think is, or not consider it, I, I don't think is, is good planning. And, you know, this particular building, yeah, we have the three stories, there's a density level to it. The property's been vacant, but that doesn't necessarily mean it's been vacant because of the zoning. We don't, you know, there's a couple of projects that have come, as, as Sam noted, didn't go through. We've got buildings that are somewhat dissimilar to this building, already built on either side commercially, the residential in the west. I think, you know, a higher density residential is, not only the structure, but the, the density of it itself is, is definitely a change in nature. And for this particular area, it, it seems like the transition from, from south starts going down into residential, all the way up to downtown, and that this, this would bring it back up, in my opinion, would be, get someone out of character for this particular location. I think the project itself is fine, and I think there are areas for it, and we've demonstrated, I think, as a village, that we're more than willing to put these projects forward. But I think just from a pure land use perspective, compatibility, and those factors, that's why I'm not supportive of it. Yes, Lynn?
Yeah, I'd, I think, I would take my lead from where the board started out. I think they would be, kind of indicated, they'd probably be in support of this if we were at a two-story rather than a three-story, something more compatible with the, with the area. And I always defer to my, our architect here, Bruce, I think he'd like to see a two-story building there rather than three. And I think he's probably right, that we can, there can be some modifications that make that feasible. So, from my point of view, I would like to actually vote to approve this, but I'd like to restrict it to two stories. And see if we could have you rework your, your plan, so that you could get a facility here that will take care of those who are veterans and who are disabled in one form or another, but do it in a way that's more compatible with the neighborhood.
Well, if I, yes, I don't know that that's a, I think, Sam, do we have the, you know, I, I don't, I think the, the, the request before us is, oh, yeah, is, is, I don't think that's on the table.
Well, we could certainly change our recommendation, number one.
I mean, basically, they wouldn't have asked the question if they didn't think that was an avenue to pursue.
Right, we could certainly, along those lines, instead of, number one, where we said, demonstrate with specificity and details, we could say that they need to, you know, come to the village with a plan for a two-story building, and if, if the village determines that that's not feasible in that way, then we would approve it a three-story. I think that the petitioner might, it's, the petitioner, in their own comments, said they're willing to work with the village on seeing if there's other options for a two-story building. I mean, I don't know if you want to speak to that.
No, I would like to speak to that first.
Yeah, I asked him to speak. No, I asked him to speak.
Hold on, order, hold on.
I have a right to ask the question.
Let's, let the, let the petitioner speak.
I was just going to suggest that Commissioner Dawson is correct, that if there is a way that the current constraints that we've been operating under are modified such that a two-story building can fit within the framework and not cost a million dollars more, we're not opposed to a two-story building at all.
Yeah, I think we could, I would agree with you, Commissioner Johnson, that, and especially if we changed the vote and the motion to a two-story building, then that would be very, that would demonstrate whether or not it really is a two-story, three-story issue as well.
Could I, Commissioner Dawson, just, just for clarification, the number of units would be the same? Is that what you're suggesting?
Not necessarily.
I mean, I don't know what you're sug, I don't know what you're, because there's a lot of variables that could come from that.
That would be up to them. I think that what we're saying is that we would, we would add to the recommendation that they, that they work with the village to try to redesign the proposal to a two, two-story building. It seems like tonight, there was discussion between staff and petitioner about maybe relooking at this and seeing if there's a way that they could fit a two-story building in. And I'd like to allow them that opportunity to investigate that. They could certainly investigate that option between now and the village board hearing. They have time.
Wait a minute, wait, can I, can I speak here?
Go ahead, yes.
I'd like to say something. This, this is highly irregular. This is what was presented to us tonight, and this is what we vote on, or we...
We do this all the time, Bruce.
No, we don't.
Yes, we do.
Because this, a two-story building has not been shown to me, I'm not going to make a recommendation on anything. I'm going to deny this, and then we'll have a second motion or something, that then you look at a two-story and bring it back.
All right, hold on, yeah, you know what? Sorry, I'm not a parliamentarian, I'm, I'm trying to balance the, the interest here, but go ahead, Joe.
But your question, I think, is better directed to Sam. Was it the trustees' intention to make it two-story and leave it the same unit, 25 units? Is that your interpretation?
I mean, I don't know what their intentions were as far as units. I think their intentions were to have the petitioner explore a two-story alternative, and, and we did see a two-story alternative. Ultimately, the petitioner opted not to move forward with it. You know, it's been several months, I can't recall if that two-story alternative did not include the Emerson Street connection, but that is something that the village would like to see. Whether we can get creative with a two-story alternative and still keep that remains to be seen. I don't know if that was ever, you know, fully explored, whether or not, I mean, if a two-story alternative is not possible with the Emerson Street connection, you know, there may be, you know, more significant concerns from staff. You know, that's not, it's not my decision, it's a department decision, and we'd have to, you know, look at a bunch of different plans and options, and, and that would take some additional time to vet.
I thought, am I correct in hearing the petitioner said earlier, before our question started in the original presentation, that a two, two-story would be unfeasible, impossible?
That's what I heard.
Isn't that what I, I mean, is...
No, but he clarified it, it's because of restrictions that the village stated about not being able to go beyond Emerson Street. And then just now, just recently, Sam said, well, they could perhaps look into some alternatives there. So, seems like there's room for discussion. I mean, I don't know if the...
But that's not like, like, location of a fence, that's more than a little bit of a change.
It certainly is. It certainly is, but it's not the first time we've suggested and moved things forward and asked them to go work with staff to make some changes.
Well, I guess... Jared, just a, a question. It seems to me that I doubt their support on this, this commission for a three-story building. I think most of it, most of us would be opposed.
Well, we, we haven't, nobody's made a motion yet, we're talking about it.
Yeah, but most of us would probably be opposed to that. There is some amount of support for a, a lower building of two stories. That might be able to pass, or it might actually have more support. I think that's what Commissioner Dawson is saying.
I understand what she's saying, I just don't know how you'd craft it and what the parameters would be for it.
Well, we're going to ask staff to help us there, that's what they're for.
I mean, my suggestion would be, you know, the village board is going to make a, a motion on what they want, regardless of, you know, what, not regardless of what comes out of Plan Commission, but I mean, if they want a two-story alternative, that's what they're going to approve. I think if we continue with the motion as recommended by staff, we're recommending that, you know, they provide more specificity, as to why a two-story alternative isn't feasible. If they, if, as part of that, they provide an alternative site plan that shows it's viable, it's something the village board could certainly consider, but I don't know that we necessarily have to make that a condition of approval, that they only move forward with a two-story alternative and present that to the village board. That's, that's my opinion.
That's like asking Sam to design the building, and we'll vote on it. I mean, well, not that they don't trust you, Sam.
So, you're suggesting we should, I mean, we should accept that first, first point, and basically, the board can decide whether they want to, want to accept a three-story or a two-story, after they've heard whatever the petitioner has at that level.
Correct.
Any other questions of the petitioner, staff, or is there a motion, or...
I would just ask the petitioner if they want an opportunity to revisit this before we move to vote. You know, continue the hearing and work with the staff to see if there's a two, it's, I'm just asking the question. You don't have to, we're just a recommending body, so if you don't get approval tonight, you can still go forward to village, you can still do that and move forward. I'm just wondering if there's a timeframe, or if that you would appreciate an opportunity.
I don't think we're going to continue this hearing, but perhaps at the next hearing.
We certainly can.
If somebody, yeah, if somebody makes a motion, I guess we could.
Right. I'm just asking.
In, in either case, we are certainly going to look at other site design options that free up some of the constraints that have been discussed tonight, and work with staff to present what a feasible two-story building would be versus what we have as a feasible three-story right now that meets all of these other requirements. And then we'll take more guidance from the village as we go into our full meeting with the trustees, so.
Okay, I think that's fair.
Okay, but that's just one of the problems that was presented here tonight. It's not, it's a three-story consideration, but there are other considerations here tonight.
What are the other considerations, Bruce?
The neighborhood, and what they think of it, and safety, and I don't really have to answer to you, Sue.
I'm asking.
I, I know what you're saying.
I'm certainly just asking, Bruce. You said there's other considerations, you didn't, I was just asking.
So, I, I think we should vote on this for what it is. This is what we just spent hours looking at. And I don't think you could, I, I've been doing this a long time, Sue, and, and, and we just don't throw it all out the window because they're, you know, they were thrown the lifeline by the, by the trustees, and they didn't pursue the two-story lifeline the way I, I'm seeing this tonight. The three-story plan is it.
Sure.
I would just add, density and compatibility were my points.
Oh, okay. I was just clarifying what those other points were, if we wanted to discuss any of them, Bruce.
Is there a motion, Joe?
Yeah, just one, one more point of clarification. Sorry if I offended anybody, but the point I'm trying to make, I don't want to spin our wheels and have us be another bunch of meetings. I think the issue is, is this going to be a rental place, or is it going to be an office? So, if we even come up with a two-story, Sam, we still got to rezonate, right?
Correct, yeah, it would still need the same rezoning.
So, I think that's the issue, rezoning it, to make it a rental place. And I, I think we're going to waste a lot of time studying a two-story building when that's really not the issue. The issue is, should it be rezoned? And I fully appreciate the, a lot of the comment, commentators, that you bought your house, and next to a property that was going to be a certain way, and then to come in and change it, yeah, that's not what you're in there, that's not what you're in for. So, I'm sorry if I offended anybody, but that's the point I was trying to make.
Is there a motion? Sorry, Lynn, I didn't mean to look at you.
No, we're, we're good, I'm just trying to figure out...
Pretty soon, we're going to need a motion to expect.
Well, we've got a, we've got an issue around 15 that they, if I read this thing marked in yellow, we have to decide whether we want that to be part of the motion or not. It has to do with parking, scaling the parking back from 51 to 32, which would require an exemption.
Well, that would be if there's a motion to approve, that would be an issue. I mean, I, I think that, Commissioner Lorenzini, your point is exactly what my struggle has been, is, this is transition. Is it appropriate transition regardless of its use? And is a three-story versus a two-story appropriate in this area? That's, that to me is the only consideration, the, the residence, anyway, I've said enough about my feelings on that. consideration. The, the residence, anyway, I've said enough about my feelings on that. But that is, that's a concern, and I, you know, I usually rely to staff on that, and that's where I'm at. We change zoning all the time. We put higher-than-three-story buildings in areas without them all the time. I just am concerned about the reasoning behind why we're more hesitant in this situation.
Is there a motion? Does anybody like to make a motion?
I'd like to make a motion to the village board of trustees, denial of a preliminary plat of subdivision to consolidate the subject property into one lot, an amendment to the comprehensive plan to reclassify the subject property from offices only to institutional, rezoning of the subject property from the OT Office Transitional District to the I Institutional District, and Plan Unit Development, BUD, approval to allow a 25-unit permanent supportive housing facility on the subject property.
Is there a second?
I'll second it.
The motion's been seconded. The motion on the floor is denial of the motion that, as Mr. Green read it. Sam, can we do a roll call vote?
Commissioner Green?
Yes.
Commissioner Ennis?
Yes.
Commissioner Dawson?
Man, I don't know. This is so hard. I don't really know. Man, this is a hard one. I want to vote no with comment, so I'm going to go that way.
Commissioner Jensen?
Yes.
Commissioner Lorenzini?
No.
Commissioner Sagalos?
Yes.
Chair Sherwin?
Yes.
All right, the motion passes five to two.
Comments?
All right. Motion passes. Yes, Commissioner comments.
I just want to reiterate that, that I, I am strongly concerned about the motivation behind the concerns here and that, but I do have my own reservations about the two-story versus three-story. I would love to see the petitioner work with staff to come up with a two-story option that could be more viable for this area. But other than that, I, I think it's a beautiful project, and I want to re, recommend the brave individuals who stood up and spoke about their struggles, and, and that was very brave. So, thank you.
Thank you. Any other comments? All right. So, the, the motion denying the petitioner's request has passed. Next steps will be communicating with our friend Sam, I think, in terms of heading to the village board. Thank you, everybody, for attending. I think we will move on to general public comment on other issues. Any other, all right, seeing no further comment, I will...
I just wanted to thank you all again for the opportunity to present.
Thank you.
Thank you.
We will go ahead and, and close. Is there a motion to adjourn?
Motion to adjourn.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? All right. Motion passes. Meeting's closed. Thank you all.